Like to call the meeting to order. Uh, we're gonna change it up a little bit and have a moment of silence for personal reflection prior to the pledge.
Does he intend to stand for that?
In preparation. You don't have to. But you have to be silent.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
And rise. The United States of America, through the Republic, through its stand, one nation, under God, in liberty, justice for all.
Here.
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 It's the goal they want to achieve.
Who's that? Sorry. Okay, I found it. I found it. Should be good now.
Add raises to number six. Angie? Angie?
Thank you. Thank you. From our end, as we get into planning for next year, which is typically this time of year, we're starting to look at, most importantly, what we're getting here in a bit is staffing, time to start hiring. But as part of a bigger work plan, staffing is a piece of that. I wanted to have some dialogue around the work plan that our team put together with the former board. And just kind of get some feedback on some of these initiatives and make sure that we're kind of aligned on where we're headed with that. So, we should have, I received a printed copy of the work plan. And just kind of at a high level, high level objectives, we didn't get into all the tiny action steps, but, I wanted to kind of go through these, obviously the first one, improving academic achievement. So if you kind of flip to the back of that first page. You can see there are two major objectives, the first one, providing students with competitive, well-rounded education. Some of the main things that we're looking at there. Continuing to work to increase specialization in the secondary level, obviously Kate Thomas is building on that piece of our vision. Solidify intervention and enrichment programs across the district. We've talked a lot about, we're really struggling intervention-wise, so that's a staffing, so that is a priority as we look at staffing in the next year and how we will structure schedules. To best utilize our staff for intervention. And just as a reminder, intervention is when a student is not meeting a certain learning objective, then they need additional support to help them get there. So for example, the main place to see this is second grade, the student is not reading at level and hasn't mastered certain objectives. They may get their regular reading with their teacher, and then they may be in a reading group where they get additional support that are based on what their identified needs are. So if they're having issues with fluency, they may be working on that, if they're having issues with comprehension, which is what we see as they get more into upper elementary. Um, they may be working on that, it may be phonics, so those are the kind of things that we provide intervention in as an example. And we talked to you earlier, Kate gave a presentation at a previous meeting, about how we've had to school the folks that do those interventions a lot to cover classes, which is why our team has been filling in, especially in the buildings that have been hit the hardest by that. So that we can keep those interventions going because our data is showing that we're not, we're not where we normally are. So, that's a priority for us as we look at staffing, and Mark's gonna talk a little bit about, um, a per day position that we've had planned in our staffing plan. And that would be able to be funded with our federal funds that we've gotten with the Esther Gold. Um, Jeremy will talk a little bit more about the latest, um, they basically went back on the last two rounds, I think he shared with you, and given us additional money because we were given so little. Compared to other districts, they put a floor in which we're gonna be able to benefit from. And that money's intended to help with basically effects of the pandemic, one of those which is loss of progress instructional. Language arts programming, and when we talk about that, you see we're really looking at certain levels and specifically at writing. Kate and Annie have been doing some work with our instructional leadership committee, which is comprised of teachers at all levels, looking at writing, really diving into, what does sample writing look like, all the way from kindergarten up to 12th grade, having some great dialog around where we see some gaps. And looking at different writing materials right now, so that's some work that we've been doing. Increasing preschool services. That's one that kind of in our big picture over this 10 years, we'd like to offer even more options for a typical peer. Right now, we're limited, we always have way more demand than we're able to provide in terms of spots for preschool. We looked at adding additional units that were not necessarily special needs based, which were required to provide special needs, we're not required to provide beyond that. But just specifically where we are right now, when we looked at it last year, we didn't feel that was feasible right now, and probably not in the moment, but that's one we want to keep on there because we really would like to expand. Our eventual vision would be that any kid in Big Walnut that wanted to be a part of our preschool program would have access to it on a tuition basis. But for us, the funding of that, there's still some pieces that we would have to cover. So that's probably more of a, not the shared discussion, but just something we want to keep under radar, something we're interested in. Um, looking at it more of a teaming model, where it's tied to nine, and all of our talk about that when we get to staffing. And then, um, looking at, I know one of the hammer pickings we had a lot with the pre-disc board was, um, making sure that we have, as we continue to grow, enough support for the administrative team so they're able to continue to focus on instructional leadership, and that's been really challenging, especially with the principals the last couple of years, as they're filling in classrooms. And, um, just really struggling to do some of the things that they technically would prefer to undertake on. Um, so with that, I'll pause on one-one, and just looking for any feedback, concerns on those objectives under one-one.
I have a question. What is the required ratio of your typical and atypical classes?
For preschool? Eight days, Ross will be back there if you get any more details on that. Yeah, so, um, you, and that's a big one, and I always try to talk about this, but a lot of people don't realize that they are required to provide preschool. And I've had people ever say, why are we wasting money on preschool, people could go do that elsewhere. But we are required to provide our students with special needs, and we do have to provide peer models for them as well. And what we have found from our kindergarten teachers is they've really seen, um, you know, good results from our students that have gone through that program. So that's part of our hope to be able to expand that offering moving forward.
Yeah, not wasting money. Preschool is gonna be a good opportunity for segue into kindergarten and so.
Yeah, and so the general rule of thumb, and preschool is great, getting kids ready to come in and learn academically, I know it's a fire deal, but just in general, um, getting kids ready to learn academically. Um, some of those kids don't have a lot of those skills for them to come in and do school, so that's where they learn those social skills, have cognitive directions, a lot of those important things. But with kids who are not at the level they should be, that early intervention is very, very valuable. So in terms of dollars and cents, typically there's a lot of research that proves that if you put the intervention in on the early end, not only is it better for the kid, most importantly, because that's obviously why we're here, but financially, it's about a realist, it's gonna be easier not spending money on intervention trying to catch them later. So, early intervention is really, really important. And most kids, you know, there's, there's really, our mindset is kids learn at different paces. We know that, we're trying to emphasize that, so the more we can front-load and not just try to identify and label, this kid needs this, this kid needs that, terms of special needs. But hey, this kid has enough of this skill, yeah, what intervention can we give them to get them to that point? And a lot of times, that's pretty typical development, we can just address on the early years, and then there's not any sometimes for an AP or additional services there.
I have one more question. Uh, what is the fee for preschool? Is there fees for parents?
It is free if it's a special needs, like doesn't got more requiring to it, and then you charge $200 a month for a typical peer. So, our goal would be to not charge that, but we're just saying actually not, we're ready to see that. I'm sorry, you want to enter, I'm sorry, preschool is 165? 165. Sorry, preschool might have, we just opened kindergarten registration.
I have a question, A, B, uh, I gradually get to one dot two, which is something that I'm pretty passionate about and love. I like the objectives, certainly this isn't a conversation about questioning anything that might be written there. Uh, the one idea that I continue to have is really generated from the largest business project that's going to occur in the history of this state, kind of in our backyard. Uh, while it does, I'm not aware of its direct impact on us from a financial standpoint, I do wonder, from a economics standpoint, what our opportunities are for our students to help feed some of that? Or get in touch with, like, um, $20 billion worth of an intel plan? So when you look at letters, so here's the question, when you look at, um, objective one dot one, letters A, B, and C, do you see any, I'm sorry, not C. I guess it's A and D, do you see any opportunity for us to increase student opportunities oriented towards that?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, and obviously with that just coming out, it's not even totally addressed, but I think it's something we're really gonna explore. Um, you know, we know there's gonna be a ton of job opportunities and high salaries in the technology field, so certainly as we look at our programming, especially, you know, I think we have a good foundation with our STEM, probably all of there that a lot of districts don't to the little kids. But I think being able to build on that more as we get up into the seven to 12, and feed into some of those opportunities is absolutely something we need to look at.
I didn't know if you and your colleagues had very much conversation room this time.
Not yet, except with it just coming out, but certainly my wheels have been spinning.
Thank you.
Anything else on one?
To tie in kind of with what Alice's question was, if the preschool is expanded, how, how is the 165 compared to, there are several businesses in the community? And if that's expanded, it will impact unless, uh, we compensate with the tuition. To kind of keep it check, they'll flood to the store if it's cheap.
It's, it's pretty comparable, and typically when we've looked at that grade, we've tried to do research. Um, so some of the programs have all day, where it's more of a wraparound daycare type model. Ours is obviously at this point not, and that's one of the things that we've looked at, because it's definitely a barrier for some families that we don't offer it all day. And so there are families that would like to take advantage. I think both, um, definitely peers, but perhaps even to our students with special needs, it just doesn't work out as well statistically. Or maybe they do put their students in there if their students have special needs, but then they have to find alternative arrangements for the rest of the day if they're working. So that would be an area that we've talked about with expansions, and not just more classes, but also being able to offer maybe some wraparound programming. So, to make it preschool all day with a licensed teacher would be very expensive, but we've looked at, could we use other staffing to have, have to be more of a daycare take field and have to be more of a preschool? But for what we offer now, which is four days a week, so currently it's Monday through Friday, we are looking at switching to Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday through Thursday currently. We're looking to switching to Tuesday through Fridays next year because, uh, when Ross and Annie look at the calendar, you know, we have a lot more Mondays off, so it makes sense to have that be the day we're off anyway. But at the preschool level, um, they have to do some home visits, which has been a little more limited since the pandemic, but they have to do play-based assessments. So on that day off, um, that's when kids who, students, parents are perhaps suspecting that there might be disabilities are able to come in and do different assessments with the team, so that's what they do on that day. Um, but anyway, so for that four-day program that's half a day, it's, it's fairly comparable. A little on the low end, but not out of the ballpark.
Thank you.
Do we fall, uh, under the ODJ FS regulations for this early childhood program?
We are under ODE for most things, but then there are some other things, like the step-up equality, and there are certain pieces of it. And if you have specific questions on what parts, I certainly will look back at Ross and Annie, because they deal with that a lot more than I do. But, um, it's kind, would you say, sort of say it's a blend?
I was just thinking about the extended care and what that regulation.
Yeah, so we've looked into, we looked into that quite a bit last year because we really wanted to do it. Um, and we're trying to make it work to where it wouldn't have an impact financially that we could try to cover it. But again, which that's a long conversation of why that I'd be happy to get into later. Didn't think that was going to work, but we did a lot of work on what requirements, what that looked like, even checked with our attorney on some things with, you know, our current population and what that would look like. If we offered all daycare, would we have to offer, for example, um, our students with special needs right now that are in preschool, would we have to provide those one-to-one aids? So it became very quickly some challenges we'd have to work through. But yes, there, it would be, I'd fall under both. And I have Mark up here to talk a lot about the staffing plan and some of the other goals, but feel free to jump in, because I feel like I'm talking a lot, if you have anything to add. Other, uh, other questions on one-one?
One-two, um, and this is an area, obviously we've been working a lot on A, but really wanting to look at more at B and C as we move over the 10-year period. Haven't done a lot with C yet, so B, one-two is looking at preparing students to be enlisted in the military, enrolled in college, or employed in a job after graduation. So enlisted, enrolled, or employed. Um, we've been really looking at that Big Walnut Eagle profile, and that's again something that Annie and Kate have been working on with our staff. That has those employability skills that we work through that process with our academic advisory and also through surveying our parents. What are those things that you most look for? We also have done a lot of work in the last few years talking to hiring managers, CEOs, human resources, on what are those skills that you look for? So pulling all that research in, um, and then how do we actually strategically teach things like collaboration? So teaching collaboration does not mean, hey guys, go work on a group project. But how do we actually teach people to work together, because that's a very critical skill in our workplace today, as an example. Teaching communication is not just saying, hey, stand up and give a book report, but strategically teaching kids strategies for how to communicate. So working through that, and then working also on how to evaluate kids' progress and give them feedback on that as well, um, through this school year with the plan to actually begin doing that next year. Um, the second one there, obviously Penny Sturtevant does a lot with our college and career readiness. We've really expanded, and again, I don't have all the details on this page, but, um, trying to expand that a lot more down into the elementary, intermediate, middle school on some of that career readiness piece. And then obviously, we've continued to expand CCP. We have a lot of relationships with our career center, different programs we do in the buildings with them on different careers. And then just different things they do at each of the buildings to bring people in and create awareness around that. Haven't done a ton with C yet, we try to do a lot in the district with the military on obviously promoting and recognizing and creating, I think, a positive feel around military service. For example, if you're not aware, we have our Purple Star Committee is, um, having the Military Appreciation Night as a basketball game. So we typically have done one at the football game and basketball game, and big thanks to Matt Cox and Kobe Donahue and their team for putting all that together. You know, I know we've shared with you that that continues to be a program that we've gotten state and national recognition on, so we're very proud of that. So I think that is something that we do that really helps to create a positive feel for our kids about military service. But one of the things I, I know we want to look further into, um, you know, right now, we don't have high numbers, for example, in ROTC because they have to go over to Delaware. So one of the things we want to look at is, do we have a certain point in size and interest where we're able to maybe offer something here? A lot of our kids don't want to leave our campus, we see that with a lot of our programs. So those are some areas that, and again, keep in mind, this is, these are things we're looking at over the next several years. So when we put these down, it wasn't like, hey, we're tackling all of this this year. These are, this is probably one that we really want to continue to explore and grow in, especially with our, our two new directors in academics, and really continue to look at this. So certainly open to ideas, but, um, I, I know you're passionate, you've got some background in that, Mr. Fuji. I feel very passionate about, um, you know, as, as a parent even, that we need to, we can always do a better job of helping our kids as they navigate through our district on really being mindful of what they want their next step to be. The exposure piece is huge, I always tell the story, I think I just shared it with Mr. Carl the other day, that, you know, I grew up in a small town and the only people I knew with college degrees were my teachers and my friend's dad, who was the judge, so I wanted to be a lawyer or a teacher. Never was even exposed to really many other careers. So I think it's really important that, um, you know, our kids are able to be exposed to so many more things today. We have other ways of exposing them that, other than just doing a, a personal site visit, you know, than when we were kids. So continuing to grow those opportunities, Mr. Jado says a great job of having people from different professions come in, and they do career talks at the high school, kids can sign up for that. Oftentimes, our teachers will, um, recommend they do that if they feel like that would be an area that would be good for a kid. So continuing to grow those opportunities.
Anything else on that one?
Questions on that one?
Well, as much as I know Mr. Jado's probably wanted to chime in on the preschool stuff as he was sitting back there. Uh, certainly my commendation to him around the idea of surveying the kids about some potential career interests and then aligning much of that work in that space. The other thing I would say is, you mentioned the Purple Star Award. I actually think that basketball game might be tomorrow night, uh, is that, am I checking my understanding correctly?
Did I not say that?
Uh, I, no, I don't know, you, you said a football game and basketball game, I just.
I thought I said it was tomorrow, I'm sorry if I didn't.
It's alright. It's alright, that's, I just wanted to check my understanding.
Yes, it is.
And then the other one, because we had the conversation about cost of preschool, I am starting to wonder about, uh, what the CCP numbers are looking like, because I know that that's an expense on us. As we look at Columbus State, Otterbine, Ohio State, other places that students might be attending. Uh, what might, I'm certain that those numbers have grown significantly. I'm, point in time, I'm sure, certain that those numbers are getting bigger as time goes on. I wonder what that might look like, and if there is a reallocation that you guys are thinking about in that space, is there a need for that? I know there's a requirement for us, uh, but I also am wondering what that, um, opportunity is looking like. And maybe that, that can just be for the future.
Well, what I was gonna say is, sometimes we've had Penny come in and do an update on that, so maybe this would be a good time, especially with a lot of new board members, to, um, have her come in and share. And for those of you that are new, maybe even educate you a little bit more on what our requirements are around college credit plus. We have tried to do a lot of partnerships where we offer those with our staff, which is nice, because, um, what we have found is oftentimes, our staff is a little more trained on working with.
Teaching and learning.
And working with the H student, but then they also are working partnered with a college professor on that syllabus. And so it's kind of a win-win where our kids are still with somebody that's used to working with kids at that developmental age, but they're also pushing them toward that first college experience. And, um, we like it on campus because it really gives them a chance to try out college-level courses in a safe environment with a safety net. So she, Penny does a really good job talking about that, so I can have her give us an update on numbers and maybe share what we're required to do and what that looks like. So we have different levels, whether it be kids that are actually on our campus taking classes. Um, we also have kids that go out and some, we usually have a handful that do their entire day full-time at a college campus. So we kind of run the gamut from maybe this kid who has never taken a college class before, first-generation college student, and here's an opportunity to take one on campus, to, hey, I've got all my graduation requirements done, and I'm gonna go out and spend my senior year completely on campus. So she does a nice job sharing that, I'll definitely check and see if we can bring her in at a meeting soon.
And just as another point of reference, I think that CCP night for high school-age students was last night, hosted at.
I know it got moved from the snow, it wasn't last night.
Right, right.
And that's online as well, where is it, Andy? That's online, right, if people missed that?
Yeah, everything is, everything is online, so if somebody missed it, we put an all-call out last night about that, that they could, you know, either show up, or two nights ago, show up in person, or it means on the, on the website. She actually has her own, um, own entire page on that that you can get through our website.
And that was just my commercial, because I got that voicemail, so thank you for that, Mr. Jado.
And any feedback you can provide on my tone or.
You won't get that from me, so.
Just to give one little snippet of the cost, um, so on our.
Foundation for our state, there it goes, for our state, uh, funding formula, we do have a deduction for the tuition side, and it's just shy of $300,000 is what we get for this year, so that gives at least.
Point of reference.
There, there's some more costs attached to it as well, but that at least gives a little starting point.
And just to kind of, so when you talk about that, that's the amount taken out of the money that would normally go, our funding, that then goes to the college for the services that they're providing. Kind of put that in perspective. And we have different rates, which I can have Penny get into, um, depending if it's a class taught by the colleges faculty or by our in-house. And if it's taught by our in-house, depending on, um, certain criteria they have to have as an instructor, or do they need to have a mentor professor with them? So we have different rates involved there as well, that we can share. Anything else on, um, goal one? All right, um, under two, and I, I, my new thing is, I'm, I'm using, this has been very, this language politically hijacked. So I think it's important for us to have a lot of discussion around, when we talk about whole child, when we talk about social, emotional, what do we mean versus what did you see on Fox News? Because it might not be the same thing. So, this is one that, again, I know is controversial, but I will tell you, I've never met anybody that actually works in a school that doesn't think these things are needed. And especially today with the current climate that we're in. So the first one is to add programming and training to strengthen social, emotional learning and mental health. And social, emotional learning for students, and increase students' empathy toward people from diverse cultures and backgrounds. And so I think it might be helpful if you don't really know what social, emotional learning is, because I know that term has been tied to some, some negative connotations. I'm gonna ask Mark, since he's got the elementary principal background here. Could you describe what we, like a typical offering, when you were, or even now, but what we do at an elementary school that falls under this, what that looks like? Maybe sharing a little bit about PBIS and some of the different lessons we do, perhaps through the counselors or other venues.
Sure, and I immediately jumped to responsive classroom, uh, when it, when we think social, emotional learning. So with responsive classroom, it's been an approach that has been around since, I believe, the early eighties. Um, and with this approach, um, it's really, uh, students will come in for a morning meeting with their teacher and, and their, um, uh, students that are within their classroom, their, their peers. And they will have a time for sharing, and there's a big focus at that time on communication with, uh, good listening skills, good speaking skills. Uh, it's an opportunity, let's say we come in on a Monday morning, that three or four students will have an opportunity to share what did they do over the weekend? And it's typically about a 15-minute time period where they're coming in, they're welcoming them to the day. There's often a greeting where they focus on, uh, just skills of basic greetings with each other, saying good morning, eye contact, talking with people respectfully, listening to people respectfully. Um, a lot of, uh, skills that appear to be missing in a lot of our society today. And so the responsive classroom approach really brings that into, uh, practice with our kids. It allows them to, um, you know, read a, a morning message from their teacher. A lot of times, there might be a little grammatical mistakes or things on purpose, so the kids have an opportunity to correct the teacher on things and, and say, hey, I think you missed that, that period there. It's, it's an opportunity to tie in different skills, um, that are important skills, uh, when it comes to our standards of learning as well. And so our, our responsive classroom approach is a key piece to our elementary. Uh, we have had our teachers trained with that. Um, and again, the, the key there is just, at the bottom line, respect. It, it's really about teaching how to have respectful dialogue with each other. It's about teaching how to have respectful discourse if we disagree. Um, again, just understanding that we will have different viewpoints and perspectives, and it's all about teaching that it's okay to have an open mind and to listen to others. You don't have to agree with everything that they say, but we should be respectful in, in those conversations. When it comes to some of our counselor supports in our, uh, PBIS, PBIS has also been around for quite a while. I've taught now for 19 years, and it was at the very beginning of my teaching even before that. Um, so this isn't something that's new. Positive behavior intervention and supports is really looking at the overall expectations that are clear in the schools. So when we come into the hallway, um, how do we act? What do our, do we have voices, levels of voices, do we talk in the halls, because that may distract other classrooms as we walk past? When we're in the cafeteria, how do we treat others? How do we show that we are respectful in the cafeteria? That comes down to even in the first days of school, where teachers are walking their kids down to the cafeteria and practicing those good skills. When we come up to the cafeteria staff, do we say good morning or good afternoon? Do we mention our lunch choice? Do we pick up our things, and then how do we respectfully walk to our table? Do we walk with one hand on the tray, or do we walk with two hands on the tray? It's those very. It's those very basic skills, but it talks about, with that PBIS program, what are the expectations within our building and each of the settings within our building? So at the very core, it's just teaching clear expectations to our kids. And then there is a focus on that positive behavior as far as reinforcing that. So when we see that, we call that out and say, hey, I really like how you were doing this. And that comes from, from a standpoint of just making sure that we have clear expectations for being respectful within our school setting.
And the idea there is really being proactive and teaching kids how to be respectful and behave versus punishing them when they don't. So it's, it's actually required by law now, which has only been, what, a few years? The years are running together in my head over the last-
Six or seven, maybe eight. Yeah, it's been a while.
So, okay, five-plus years now. It's been required in Ohio because they recognize the research around it and the importance. But again, the idea being with all this, that we're proactively teaching kids how to be respectful, how to be courteous, how to do the right thing, how to be a good friend, how to be a good listener, why it's disrespectful if I'm talking when you're talking. It's those types of things. But the idea on PBIS is you're front-loading it and teaching kids that upfront instead of punishing them when they don't, which quite frankly, when I was a kid, I got punished a lot in school.
I find that hard to believe, Ms. Amber.
I've, I've shared before, I didn't have recess in second grade because I couldn't quit talking and I'd sit by the teacher's desk, you know. It was very, but you know, that's how it was then. Like you don't do it to your boss, so you're in trouble, you don't have recess. Now we know taking a hyper kids recess away is about one of the worst things that you can do if you want to have a good afternoon. So just really a shift toward holding kids accountable, but holding them accountable after we've taught them the expectations. And also recognizing that kids come from different backgrounds and sometimes kids need to learn, hey, maybe at home you're allowed to call names or interrupt or whatever, but when we're here with our friends at school, we're gonna be respectful and we're gonna pay attention and we're gonna listen. So it's a, it's a lot of that front-moving. And then we have at each of our, so Mark talked a lot about the elementary, but there's also in our other buildings, programs where they're doing lessons on those similar things. And then recognizing, for example, we have RISE and SOAR and Eagle Strong at the other buildings. And those are where they're promoting and recognizing kids when they are showing those core values that we're trying to, which are universal things, again, like being respectful, being accountable for myself and my actions, you know, being, I'm trying to think of some of these acronyms now. What do they all mean? Respectful?
Got it. RISE, SOAR.
Yeah, I'm trying to think what the different ones are. But they're all those universal, again, they, they go back to what do we expect from our kids? To be kind, to be respectful, you know, to, to not interrupt, those kind of things. And then I'll let you talk a little bit about kind of what we've tried to do under B, maybe Mark with-
Yeah.
Because I know that was a question we had moving forward.
Right. So again, I think there's a, a point where, you know, again, things are the intention of things and the expectations for what we believe things should be within our school district versus what maybe on a national basis, phrases and words and, and definitions are being turned and, and looked at from a different perspective. And so we believe firmly that we need to spend time specifically on definitions of these terms. The term diversity, the term inclusion, the, the term social, emotional learning. And so what do we mean when we say those things in Big Walnut? Because I believe that on a national basis, and when people maybe hear phrases and words that they don't know the, the specific details of, some will have negative beliefs or presume negative intentions with those terms. And so I think it's very key to talk about diversity and what we've done so far for that. We have a long way to go with some of that. But really what diversity includes is understanding and having empathy towards others from different backgrounds. And so when we speak to a student maybe joining our class from a different country or a student joining our class from a different culture or a different socioeconomic status, that we are able to have a better understanding of maybe how their family has raised them. I'll give you a good example. Back when I was a teacher in the Washington DC area, when we talk about diversity, oftentimes people think just race, but really, we're speaking to different backgrounds from a cultural standpoint. We would have students from different religions. And so in my school, I knew that certain days when I had a student that was, who was Muslim, that they would have different times of the year where they had certain expectations within their religion. And so for me as a teacher, I could be prepared to know what that meant. And, and not to say that I had to agree with anything that they did, but certainly for me to have an understanding and a, an awareness of some of these differences. When we talk about students from different countries, I had students from Pakistan. And so when students would, when a father was away, I understood that that, the oldest boy in the family, the oldest male, was the head of the household during that time. So I understood that I might get a little bit more behavioral changes with that student because mom was not in command of the household. And whether I agreed or disagreed with that, that was the culture and that was the upbringing of this child. And so these are the pieces that I was able to prepare them for in my classroom throughout the different days that I had our students. When we talk about students coming from different countries, for example, one of the trainings that we've had with our staff was based off the Hofstedt Cultural Dimensions. And this is a, a key conversation within many places, not just within schools, but within multiple professional settings. Where we talk about, you know, the cultural dimensions include things like the power index. Who holds the power in certain cultures? Is it more of a male or female? Is it a specific age? Maybe elderly have more of a control of a family than, than the young? It's a power index to look at and understand then from different backgrounds where our students may be coming from. When we look at, for example, individualism versus collectivism is another one of those cultural dimensions. And we look at students who are coming from different backgrounds that a focus is on only their family. And so students coming from certain cultures, when they decide that they want to go to college or they want to do something outside of their family, their family often has a very difficult time with that. And so when we look at, some societies are very collective in their thought. They believe that we should help all others at all times and we should focus more on others than ourselves. And so understanding the differences when it comes to those kind of approaches with our kids, that no matter what their age is, they have families that are raising them and, and families that are working with them throughout their timeframe, that they're with us for those 13 years. But quite honestly, those, they're gonna be part of that family a lot longer than they're here at Big Walnut. And so when it comes to our teachers working with our kids, we want to make sure that they have more of an understanding of where are our kids coming from? And recognizing if I have a kid who joins my class tomorrow from a specific country, understand that there may be some differences in how they look at things and when they come into our classroom. And so that's the biggest focus, I would say, on diversity. I think certainly we, within this, this objective, having a diverse committee, a diversity committee to come, and we, we did have that within our high school. We would like to expand that more to our K-12 to get different perspectives. That's the whole goal from it. It's not to say we're going to necessarily agree with everything that people bring to the table. We may get ideas that we do or don't like and things that we want to work through. But I believe that that is where we get the most input, is when we have these opportunities for our committee of parents to come together and say, hey, this is an opportunity for us to share our ideas and our beliefs. And again, we may not be able to do everything, but at least people are being heard and we're giving them an opportunity to, to share their, their beliefs and their, and their thinking when they're bringing their kids to our schools. And so we can, we want to continue to work on this. We want to continue to build an awareness and empathy towards others. Empathy is not a bad word. Empathy is simply understanding where somebody else is coming from and how they are feeling in a moment. And that's okay. You know, when, when somebody has a tragic event in their family, empathy is being able to, to recognize how they are feeling. Sympathy is being sad with them. Empathy is just recognizing that they might be sad in that moment. Empathy is recognizing that when a kid's dad is away for military leave or deployment, that that student may have more trouble. That student may have anger during that timeframe because his dad is not home. That kid may be missing his mom who's deployed in another country during that timeframe. So they may have different emotions that they need to deal with. Empathy is recognizing as a human being that we want to understand where that kid is coming from. We're trying to put ourselves in their shoes. That's the definition of empathy.
You're starting to sound like Brene Brown there, Ms. Teacher.
And so from all this, I'll wrap it up, but, but from all this, that, that, that is where we are coming from. That is our intention within Big Walnut for helping our kids to be successful, responsible citizens as they grow up.
What, so I suppose after that, what are you looking for from us in terms of how we might either be supportive or inquire about this topic?
So, you know, one of the conversations we had around was, we have been planning to expand that committee as Mark just talked about from the high school to K-12 so that we can continue to get perspectives. I can tell you, we've, we've enrolled five students this week that are from different cultures. So I think as we continue to grow and see different cultures and students who speak different language coming this way, it's going to become more and more critical that we are mindful of, of people's cultures and opinions and how do we best make sure that all of our kids, I think our, our main goal is to make sure all kids feel safe and welcome here.
I was gonna say this-
I think everybody sitting here would agree with that. So when we have kids that don't feel safe or welcome, how are we addressing that? What does that look like? What tools can we continue to give our staff? Because a lot of times, they aren't sure how to handle some of those situations. And so a lot of what Mark talked about is we've been trying to do, you know, different trainings with them, but then also just getting input from the community, continuing to have an awareness, looking at different ways we can grow that sense of empathy and understanding for people who are different than we are.
So I recognize this ties directly back to our vision. Our vision has been in place for a decade plus. The conversation of a safe, warm, welcoming environment is, is part of who we are. So I, I suppose that I come back to that question of, in terms of you're sharing this information with us right now, what would be helpful from us to be able to provide back as feedback? As this work plan has also been part of our culture now for a number of years, at least since I've been on the board. What, what's the right amount of feedback that you're looking for us from?
I think on this one, you know, we wanted to take a little time to talk about some of those terms. We've done some work and, and shared that with our staff just on, you know, when we say diversity, when we say equity, when we say inclusion, what does that mean? And it, and it's interesting that inclusion, sometimes people want to nullify the word of including everybody and making them feel welcome and included. You know, we've done that with special needs for years. And so it's just the same idea of whether it's special needs or I'm from a different culture or I'm from a different, you know, race or whatever, that everybody feels included and welcome and part of the school community. So I think part of it was, we want to share when we talk about these things, this is what we mean. So there's an understanding. And then I think that the ask then is, as we look at moving forward and expanding that committee, if there's any feedback from the board on that, because certainly we don't want to put out, and we think it's the right work to do, but we don't want to look to do that and then not be aligned to you all. So just, again, we kind of tried to talk with our, our two branded board members when you came in for your orientation about this work plan. We haven't had a chance to sit down with all five of you and just, hey, now that everybody knows kind of where, where we are, do you have any feedback on it? Are you good with us moving forward with those items?
I do have a question about your teaching respect face-to-face. Is that just in the elementary?
No, I think to what Angie was mentioning a while ago, the, the SOAR program, the RISE program and the Eagle Strong program are really about building those character traits in our kids, the respect especially. Integrity is a key word that's used there as well. Integrity is acting the right and responsible way even when nobody's looking. And so it's, it's really focusing on each of those major character traits of being a responsible citizen within our school community, but then hopefully that transitions to being a responsible citizen within our, our whole community.
How are they doing that in the high school, Mark?
And I would speak, Andy will speak on the very specifics of each of those pieces because the Eagle Strong is, is a focal point for them where there may not be direct instruction quite as much as what there is at the early years of the elementary level, but there's still a reinforcement of those behaviors and those character traits that they would like to see our students to demonstrate.
And I would say also, K-12, it's often taught through literature as well. I mean, that's a lot of the point of teaching literature versus nonfiction or even in some nonfiction. But being able to look at what are some of those universal lessons and literature's key for helping people develop empathy in particular. And when you have empathy for somebody that's different than you, it's much easier to show respect. And so that's a lot of what comes out of reading literature about people who aren't exactly like me.
I, I, I understand that and I understand about the literature, but you were describing a program where in the morning arriving at school, there was the face-to-face.
Sure.
What is being done in the high school to continue-
Right.
-that practice?
Right. And so back to that point of direct instruction, there isn't as much right now for those secondary levels. And so there is establishing, here are core expectations within our building, here are the character traits and the overall responsible things to do within our school, but there isn't that face-to-face near as much. There aren't those opportunities necessarily, but it's now thinking then, how can we creatively think of ways to include some of those pieces? How can we maybe fold some of that into what we do within the building? There's more of an integration as opposed to a isolation of, hey, this 15 minutes, we're dedicating toward some of those key skills. But the other hope is that as we work with our little students and our youngest population, that that, as they move up in time, that they, they see more of those traits within those secondary level settings.
And Andy, if you want to add anything specifically, feel free to.
And then what we've done mainly has been through Eagle Strong program is that we've got five values, which we'll go over in a second, and then our staff-
Want to come up and use the mic? Sorry, just for streaming. Yeah. It's a video.
I know.
And hide in the back.
It's not like the old days, we're all on video. Now you-
I could. It's not a church, you don't have to sit in the back.
Stand up.
It's working all right? I'll talk loud, so is picking me up all right, Wayne? So what we've-
Done is we've had, we have the five values, our core values, and then students and staff who are part of this process, we revisit it every three years and we actually just made a change. So our five core values, we talk about excellence, so they strive for excellence, acceptance. So it's the eagle, so acronym for eagle. Excellence, acceptance, growth mindset was one that we just changed last year. We felt that everything that our students were going through, that was essential for them. Leadership is, is the L, obviously something that we, we work on, and then E is for effort. We always feel that if our students come to school every day and they try, that they're gonna be successful. We'll work with them and make them successful. So those are our five core values. So the main thing that we've done, and we actually just did this last week, we have cards that are made up that have the five core values. The teacher circles which core value the student demonstrated and then they receive that. We then have a raffle and then every month, we have winners that get gift cards if they, if they do that. So that's kind of the way we try to do two things. One is to give them positive reinforcement, like Mark, Mark mentioned earlier, that they're doing one of those five core values and then, you know, the motivation with the, with the gift card. Because when you're talking 14, 18-year-olds, it's a little unique. And we even had the students help us with where, it's mostly food, but where they wanted the, where they wanted the, the gift card. So, and then we come in and we present it to them in front of their students, in front of the class, and we get kind of a little bit hokey, kind of a version of what the elementary does with their, with their gift cart. But then we try to obviously make it a little more adult, so the kids are excited. And once again, trying to get their students' input on, on what would excite them and motivate them. So that's the biggest piece we do, is we try to recognize that positive behavior, so it's seen and done again. We do have Eagle Time every Wednesday. That Eagle Time is typically mostly based academic needs, so students can go wherever they need. It's a flexible study hall for, for academic help. However, we have had times, and we did this at, at the beginning of the semester, we have had times where we have addressed Eagle Strong during Eagle Time as well. We just try to see how many times we can say eagle. So, you know, Eagle Time, we talk about Eagle Strong. But, but that's the mo, or that's what we've done so far with it. And like I said, high school is a little more unique in how you carve time in there over the academics, but that's what we've, that's what we've tried to do.
So typically with our little kids, like coming in and we're sitting on the carpet and we're doing greeting. I mean, we're obviously doing it with the older kids, but the hope, as Mark said, is we're building that over those early years and then continuing to reinforce and recognize as they get older.
And at our last PAC meeting, we've done this the last two, we do check-ins. We, we did a check-in with our, with actually our teachers and asked them how they were doing. We did a green light activity and we did a different activity last month and talking to those teachers about that, how can you do that in your classroom? How can you check on students real quick in your classroom? Still get to the academics that you need to, but just make sure that your students are okay. So that's another way we try to incorporate that.
I do just want to highlight too, the funding for those gift cards comes out of the PTO at the high school or sometimes Andy's own pocket. And, and he has been amazing with the work that he's done. And he has been amazing with the work that he's done with the kids and just the commitment that he has to that building and those students. So, really appreciate that as well.
And I will say, just had a meeting with our academic boosters last month. They are, elementary PTOs are always further ahead with money, but we now are currently, I believe, over $5,000 for the first time ever. The first month of the group, we were negative 260 because our first fundraiser did not go well. So, in the last seven years, that group has really come a long way. So, they're going to do even more funding and supporting, and I could see this program being one of them.
Mr. Jados, I have a question.
Yes.
As we're talking and Angie, Mrs. Hamburg referred to, these are rules at school. We adhere, this is how we talk, this is how we communicate, what happens at home, hopefully, you know, is good. But have you seen or have you looked at the communications with the children being directly involved with their cell phone usage in the classrooms? And what cell phone policies are there? And have you, you or your staff, like, talked about this?
We've had quite a few conversations about cell phones in the past. And one thing that's great is, a lot of times when we talk about the OCC, the league that we're in, you think about it athletically, well, there's actually an academic council as well that meets with assistant principal every month, and I'm in constant communication with those principals. Actually, currently, the, I'm the vice president of the OCC, so that even gives me a little bit more latitude into that. And so, we're a lot of times having conversations online about whether our schools are doing the cell phones. It's a very difficult thing to manage. So, what we've done is, we've really talked about with our teachers and with our students that, to try to make sure that it's just not a, it doesn't-
Distract.
Distract, thank you. Doesn't distract the learning process. You know, it used to be, there was a time where you would take the phones.
Nightmare.
You know, legally, everybody that I've ever seen, the last school to do it was Gehanna, and they do not do it anymore because grabbed the phone, $1,100,
Sure.
dropped it on the ground, and then had to pay the $1,100. So, we do not take the phones. Unfortunately, that's probably the best way to handle it, but we just can't do it. And there's even more reasons why you can't, but you-
And if I could add a couple of reasons, because I know this has come up a lot lately. And I'll go back to when I was middle school principal in 2009, and Mr. Fuji was right before me, so feel free to chime in on this. At the time we did that, we took every kid that, if your phone was out, we saw it or heard it, we took it. The parent, we put it in a Ziploc baggie with the name, parent had to come get it. It was almost a full-time job to manage that. But what ended up happening was, and it got worse and worse, and everybody I talked with, my peers, same thing, the parents were livid, because what would happen is, nobody has home phones anymore. And so, they wouldn't know, we would make them come get the phone, so we would call them and tell them, well, my kid needs it because he's going from practice and he's going to be here, and I need to know when he's home. And so, it turned into our dean of students navigating those conversations all the time, very angry parents. And I think most people got to a point where, okay, cell phones are not a novelty anymore. And so, how do we work with families and teach kids how to use them? You know, I have mine out here in case one of them texts me something I'm forgetting to tell you. How do we teach them to use them responsibly because they're not going away? And it sounds great to say, we'll just take them outlawing. The policing of that-
Oh, absolutely.
-is a full-time job, and it's a nightmare. And most of our parents, I would say, from my experience personally dealing with it, are not supportive of that, because they get upset when we take them. And they want their kids to have them, especially after school, with the crazy logistics of trying to get them. And I don't know if you've dealt with it much as a principal as well. I know not as much at the elementary, probably for Mark, but I would agree with Andy. We started to see all districts just start to go away from that, because as more and more kids have cell phones and more and more people else don't have home phones, it's just really, really difficult to manage that. So, the focus has shifted more on, how do you teach kids to use them responsibly versus, we're going to fight this all day long with a thousand kids.
And then we've really tried to focus on that, because we see that as a lifelong lesson. As far as if you're in a college class, if you're in a job, you know, how do you handle the phone? Do you, and we've even talked about that, we've had teachers that have talked about that during Eagle Time. Do you have it on your desk? Is it too tempting to have it on your desk? We usually tell our teachers to tell our students not to have it on the desk, because it's too tempting for them. And, you know, there is, there's research out there that it's actually can be an addiction. So, you know, how do you handle that? But we've really thought about trying to get them to see in their job, in college, in their life, you know, ways to be able to handle that and not have it, like you said, distract you, not have it get in the way of what you want to, of your success.
But I would encourage parents, if they don't want their kids to have them at all, because it's hard for us to police which parents want their kids, is just to have your kid keep it at home.
Parents are all over the place. We have some that are extremely supportive, they're going to take the phone for a week. To be honest, that number is reducing.
And more that want to sue us if we even touch their phone.
I think it goes back to what Angie said. I think so many are doing things after school, and it's funny, you go back to, I think, all of us, you know, how, you know, how you would get a hold of somebody or make the phone call, or what that would look like. I remember when I got my, became head principal at Franklin Heights, I remember the secretary joke and said, hey, tell me, you know, if any family ever wants to get you, they can call me. And she's like, oh, wait a minute, now with a cell phone, you probably don't need that anymore. And just how that has changed as far as phone calls in the office, parents typically don't call the office as much now. They'll directly text their child. And now, you're trying to enforce, do you discipline a student for taking their phone out of their pocket to get a text from their parent? So, that's where you really kind of get into it, and parents are just all over the board on it.
Yeah, I have spent some time, I'm sure as you, being in the school all the time, I guess what I've looked at in some of the schools that are changing their policies as a sliding scale, and we're talking about not physically taking the phone away from the child, but it would be, you know, K through sixth, you can take it out at lunch. Or, you know, as you go through seventh through eighth, it's a little bit, you know, lenient. And then, you know, ninth through 12, kids should be able to discipline themselves, but in the classroom setting. We're not, I'm not suggesting physically removing a phone, but what policies there are, what backing the teachers have, if they're, you know, are the policies the same? Are they, if the children are, you know, the kids can't hardly talk without looking at their phone, you know, like to, we're going to take this time, if it's an emergency, we understand, but to be able to, you know, set it away. Put it away in your backpack and get it out, grab it during. So, I've seen that where it's on a sliding scale through the high school. Kids can grab it in between classrooms and things like that. And I understand where it can be a useful tool, kids have Chromebooks, but that may also go along with more stringent policies on children taking pictures of other people and then posting them in school on social media during school hours. And there's, there's, there's a, I mean, I've looked at it, and I'm sure you all have, there's, there are, we are faced going into a new culture. I mean, everyone has it, you know, smart watches and all of that. But it's also very, as we see the children's attention time and all of our time is challenging. So, I just wanted to bring that up before talking about communication and, you know, the friendly greeting, to be able to talk to people. I mean, our kids facing the phones during the classrooms, you know, that in-person, which is important.
And we just had a meeting about it last week, about, kind of talking about our, you know, skills for success and where that's going to be with our Eagle profile. And then, you know, talking about students' communication and how important a skill that is to be able to look somebody in the eye and talk to them and not take your phone out. So, that's definitely something that we've already addressed and look to address more in the future, because it's a skill, like I said, that and being able to handle when you look at your phone and how you control that, and that addiction is huge for students now and adults.
I recognize that we probably got here off of the conversation of self-regulation, the conversation of executive functioning, the conversation of what SEL means as it relates to this particular goal. Are there other things that you would want to hear from us in terms of this goal? I mean, we kind of got down pretty deep in a rabbit hole on cell phones at this point, I'm just wondering.
I just want to highlight really quick, because I got a text, not that I'm distracted with having my cellphone here, but did get a text from Kate Thomas, so thank you for BWI. The RISE stands for responsibility, integrity, safety, and empathy. They're all terms that I think we've used today. The other phrase within the middle school is SOAR, which is scholarship, ownership, awareness, and respect. And to your point, Ms. Nix, regarding instruction and face-to-face contact, one of the conversations we've had too, of thinking outside of the box, is how we use that free time, whether that was previously a study hall. We've used a lot of this advisory time that students can get additional help, as Andy spoke to with the Eagle Time. But also during that time, if students don't have additional help that they need, these are opportunities for us to talk about these specific traits and these specific expectations within the school setting.
Thank you, Mark. I do have one more question for Mr. Jados. Sorry, I would have tried to catch you before. That's all right, you don't have to come back up. Every time you do a program, you look at the outcome. What has the outcome been for the program you're implementing in the high school for this behavior improvement?
Maybe I should come back. I got yelled at last time, so I'll come back up. We charted a lot of different things. We do chart, we do chart just discipline, and we look at our discipline numbers. We also chart how many cards that we give out. We do that as well. And actually, I'm just now in the process of writing thank you cards to our staff members that went above and beyond and gave out five or more. Because once again, we feel like the more the students are recognized, the more we're going to see that behavior from them and then through other students. I don't have that information in front of me, but we do look at, we do look at both those things. So, and then that's where, I said, every three years, we have a group that comes together and look at the values as well to see, okay, are these values what we want to reinforce? And that's why we just added the G-change to growth mindset from goal-driven. And I think setting goals is important too, but we thought just growth mindset was one that we need. So, we continue to evaluate those, and I can look at those numbers for you, but we do look at them every year.
And I would add, I know you do different surveys throughout the year with kids and getting their feedback. I'm not sure if you did it with the last year being crazier, so, but I know many years, you brought in every single senior when they go to graduate, and he does an exit survey with them. And I know you get a lot of good feedback there on kind of, they're probably a little more honest as they're on their way out the door.
Sometimes very honest, yeah.
What has worked for them, what hasn't? And I know that you've shared some of that feedback that you've got from those-
And they actually, and one thing I'll ask, and they actually rate their overall high school experience on a 1 through 10. So, that's been very helpful. And then, you know, one thing that they would change that can make our school better for all students. So, that is something that we didn't do, we didn't do the past, I think technically, the past two years, because obviously, two springs ago, we weren't here, and then last year. But we're going to bring that back this semester, especially with them changing into a new building. They've had a lot going on, and I'm actually meeting with the student council tomorrow, or today, 10th period, to talk about some things that they would like to see done as well. But, yeah, all those things we try to do to get feedback, to make sure that what we're doing is effective, and if not, we'll change it.
I don't know that you can commit to 10th period today if the board meeting is still going on at that time.
Well, my schedule today is fluid.
Fluid, okay.
It's a growth mindset.
For sure, growth mindset, perfect. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Then the other one, just moving into 2.2 and the staffing. And again, Mark will talk more about this with the staffing plan, but just kind of getting that big picture from goal two with staffing, making sure that we have enough support for our kids' needs and looking at expert recommendations, which he has for you in the staffing plan. So, for example, when we look at, what is the recommendation of the ratio of nurses to students? For example, would be one of those recommendations. Increasing athletic and co-curricular staffing to provide more opportunities for students. As we continue to grow, we look at adding additional opportunities for our kids, maybe additional levels of teams, so maybe as sports grow, we add a JV, we add freshmen, things like that. And then, continuously monitoring, improving safety measures. And I think this would make sense from the staff standpoint, when you look at more of the objectives, and we'll hit on that when we get into staffing. But one of those was looking at adding additional school resource officers that fell under that. And obviously, this board just approved to add a half-type one that also helps incorporate with our traffic direction, which we've had some meetings on, and that's going really well. So, that would be one that falls under there from a staffing standpoint. And again, we'll get more into the actual staffing there, but any questions from a big picture on that? On goal three, this one is really looking at our resources, so capital and human. Adding staff equipment and facilities to accommodate district growth. So, staff, for example, one of the things we're looking at is evaluating as we move buildings around the amount of custodians, for example, that we have at the new high school as we add additional square footage. Under this school, we're looking at the current work that is starting on February 15 on our old high school to convert that to a middle school. So, looking at what we need there to be able to transition that to a middle school. Restructuring custodial maintenance departments, we've kind of been working through that with Doug starting to assume the responsibility, not this Doug, with Doug Swartz, for the custodians and looking at moving maintenance over to him is the next step of that. Adding and maintaining our exterior athletic facilities and adding building and district equipment as needed. Again, we get into more detail in the bigger plan that we've shared. Okay, sorry, there was a typo on 3.2, should say maintain existing facilities and equipment. And so, again, we have lists that are constantly evolving there with equipment replacement and the capital improvement list that I know we've shared with you in the past. So, probably due to share that again soon with our new board members. But Jeremy and Mark do a nice job with Doug Swartz and Ron McClure of just regularly meeting and planning and making sure we're staying on all those projects. You know, right now, we're working with BWI Grove, for example, and that conversion of Eagle High School. So, they have an ongoing committee where they're looking at and monitoring and making sure that the funding is there for that.
And so, as we as board members kind of take the tour of the facilities over the next month or so period, keeping this in mind will be important for us.
Yep.
Thank you.
Angie, I do have a question. Based on this very informative article that you sent, it talks about the enrollment in public schools going down. You just stated that you enrolled five new students. What would, and this might be a question for Jeremy. Based on the enrollment at the beginning of the school year, this year, what would you say the enrollment has done at Big Walnut? Is it, you lose five, you gain five, is there a balance there? Or what are you seeing the enrollment here? Because you're talking about adding staff to accommodate district growth, but yet you sent this article to alert us to the fact that nationally-
I think the article I sent was about principals, wasn't it? I'm not sure which article, what's the headline?
This was, "Public education is facing a crisis of epic proportion," is what you said. And in this article, it talks about public school enrollment is declining.
Right, and that wasn't the reason I sent the article, but we're not experiencing that here. We are seeing more since the pandemic of homeschooling.
Okay.
But we are continuing to see enrollment growth.
So, would you say it's kind of equaled out the number of families that have left Big Walnut? We've had new students come in and it's kind of balanced out. Are you seeing more people leaving than are coming?
We're continuing, bro.
Oh, and I can speak specifically to that through our board FTE reports. As you may recall, to those who've been on the board for a few years, we did have a flat line during that pandemic where we had 4,012 students in September of 2020. We then had, or sorry, 2019, and then in 2020, we had that same number. But then this past year, in that board FTE report that I presented, we were at 4218. And I can tell you, as of just looking at this this past week, as we continue to, our staffing plan continues to be revised on a weekly, monthly basis, depending on the time of year. But as of right now, we were at 4290. So, we've gained 72 students throughout this school year as a whole.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
And Ms. Nix, the, at the end of the treasurer's board, I think it's like on page three or four.
Yeah, I saw that.
That number, so he also has the historic look back from the last 10 years, the number from the last quarter, and then the current number as it sits. So, that's an area also, we can keep an eye on that.
Thank you.
All right, then in the last one, the financial responsibility. Jeremy, do you want to talk through this a little bit? We've been talking a lot, this is cutting here maybe. Obviously, we help with it, but probably good for you to cover it.
Yeah, absolutely. So, looking at, as we've talked with the board, while the strong credit rating is not the end-all, be-all, the, kind of the rationale- end all be all, the, kind of the rationale behind having that as a key indicator is that Moody's, who is our rating agency, we have a AA2, which is a very strong credit rating. They have a kind of matrix that already lays out various things, such as fund balance, the economic factor of what does your community look like, and, and I realize that there are things within our community that we can and cannot kind of do too much about and control. However, we want to be parties to those conversations and be building the relationships with our, our mayors, with other townships, and continuing that we can be aware of what those, the impacts are, and be able to share what the, what we believe the impact is going to be with, with our community or our, our school district based on those decisions. So that was kind of the reason behind having the Moody's for that objective 4.1, is that it, it already has an established thing that we're trying to look at and track, such as decision-making from a board and a administrative team too, just how we look at planning for growth and, and having a, a set goal and idea of what we want to do in our school system. Those are all things that are, when Angie and I have talked with rating agencies, those are all things that are our key elements in explaining, why do people want to be in Big Walnut? What is occurring in the, the community? Why are people coming to the community? And I think sometimes the agencies that we're, we're presenting to realize that part of a strong community is a strong school system. So that was, just looking at that, one of the pieces that we have talked about then too is cash balance projections, or is that a, over the full five-year period of a forecast, do we look at having a cash balance, knowing that sometimes we're budgeting for worst-case scenario or, or planning for a worst-case scenario? Is it something where we want to have a, a sliding scale on that cash balance? Because again, that is something that is looked at by the rating agency. And as we have found, fortunately, we have not had to dip into that cash balance the last couple of years, but it was, at least for the finance guy, a comfort to know that when there was uncertainty in the economy, when we were going through the pandemic, that we did have a safety net. So always advocate for making sure that we do watch that cash balance. And then really, that, that goes into then objective 4.2, it kind of wraps everything up. It's, it's great to have academic goals, it's great to be thinking about what every child needs to become a good citizen, but many times that there is a financial impact. So looking at where, if, if we do need more funds for that, is that something that we look at doing, and how do we communicate that? As well as looking at the resources that we have, whether it be looking for grants. We've been with some of our stimulus funding, trying to also bridge some of those pieces where we can offset some of the costs that fit within still the plan that was already built, so we can allow growth to continue to occur before those costs come on to a general operating funds. So, when, when we're looking at obtaining resources, that's not just new levies, that's also looking at grants, that's looking at how do we do things better with the resources we have? It's kind of an all-encompassing of, you know, trying to stretch every dollar, squeeze everything that we can to, but, but still be trying to get the resources to, to provide our students and our community with what they want and desire. So, I'll, I'll stop there, and if there's any questions on that.
I will add in, well, Mark's getting things set up for the staffing that we, our enrollment person shared, we've enrolled 40 students since January 1st and lost 11 in the same period. So just to give you an idea, you know, sitting here today at February 10th, we've picked up 29 kids since January.
A net total of 29.
Net, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. Which is a teacher, if they were all one grade, obviously, we just absorb them throughout the year. That's kind of how that works. You start at this point, absorb, 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 and then usually by the next year, which is a good segue for Mark, then we look at staffing. But questions on finances before we do that?
Is there an opportunity to also recognize in the objectives, the state audit and the performance of not only yourself, but also your department on continued to recognize financial transparency, strength of the district based on resources? Is there an opportunity here to celebrate that, or is that to be done later?
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I'll tell you, it's always a nice time when we make it to January, February, and the audit's over, and, and we can celebrate for that.
I was gonna say, be honest, so you enjoy the audit process.
There are elements that I enjoy about the audit process.
Jeremy, I want to thank you for the other day, making finance fun.
Oh.
We spent about three hours, and you were very, very willing to give any information and ask, so I do want to personally thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And on a side note, I would like to ask you, or look at the grants, like where we do the research for the grants, what grants are available for the school, and maybe we can talk about that.
Sure. But, but Mr. Fuji, I think in general, when I was saying about the Moody's kind of metrics, those go into it as well, is clean audits, those are all viewed favorably to, to say, hey, the administration, the district is running well, knows what they're supposed to be doing and is doing it.
And my only thought is that, like, again, the Moody's report is strong, and the fact of the matter is, that's a culmination of many other things, but I think the recognition of that audit in this space that factors into that is something that is much more within your control and the control of the department.
And, and I did just hear from our area liaison with the auditor's office, and I believe it is in, it's either April or May meeting, she's going to come and officially present the certificate to us.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
And well done.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and over to the staffing plan, you'll see in front of you the paper copy, and this has a lot of detail, so certainly I'll try to get through kind of an overview today, a little bit of detail, and then certainly if you have any questions or concerns, you can touch base, I'm more than happy to answer questions, but then also if you need a deeper dive on some things, feel free to let me know, we can certainly set up a time to do that. To those of you who were on the board before, you've seen this already, we saw the original staffing plan. What I've attempted to do today is to take a look through this adjusted staffing plan with you. You'll see in this 2122 column, which is column B on this spreadsheet, you will see, actually, it begins with that enrollment projection based off the 250-home study of the update that was done in 2019. So this is a two-year-old study at this point. Certainly as we grow, we would probably want to look at that every so often of being updated. That is pretty typical within districts that are growing, where they want to continue to see that projection and see, are we on track? As I noted, the third line down will note the total enrollment as of today with 4,290 as of Monday, I should say. And so with that, we are slightly below the projection of the 250-home study. So noting that that update for the enrollment study looked at 150-home projection, 250-home projection, 350, and 450. The board in creating this 10-year staffing plan requested that I do this based off a 250-home study, and that is pretty much where we are trending, within about one and a half percent at this time. So that, that's a pretty good number, I believe, that we're projecting things off of because we're seeing that within our enrollment. I will highlight, as I highlight each year in the September FTE report, this number does not include homeschool students, this number does include students who are in an electronic setting. And so when we talk about the electronic setting, we have students who may go off to, they'll do a electronic school for a few weeks, and they might come right back to us a few weeks later, because they recognize within those homeschool set, or those electronic settings, that they may not be quite as successful with that. We do have a certain number of kids that are successful, and then we have a lot of students who would transition back and forth throughout the year. And so we do prepare with those numbers, and that enrollment study as well, those numbers are included in that as well. So as we look down, we'll see here, I do want to highlight in that 2122 column, you'll see the number we anticipated adding in the original 10-year staffing plan, and if it is green, we, we added as planned for that, for that column or that line there. If you see a red cell, that has indicated that we anticipated adding, but we did not add due to a student need or due to an enrollment change within those, those buildings specifically. And then if you see a yellow, we've added more than what we anticipated on that original staffing plan. So if we look at the, the bottom line, I believe, the original staffing plan, we had in there, I believe, just over 25 staff adds, we were at 27.25. So we were just over the projections overall within this past year. As we go into next year, and that's kind of my focus today, is really looking at next year, but kind of wanted to talk through that, certainly that work plan drives everything that we do within our staffing. And so when we look at the work plan and what we're calling for and what we're wanting to continue to, to work toward for our kids, you will see also encompassing the growth of enrollment. And I'll start very, very much at the top here, we planned on adding one bus driver next year. As we have seen, and as I just mentioned to you, we've had 78 students enrolled since the FTE report came out in September 21. We would anticipate that we're going, we're right back on track with our typical growth year by year over the last several years, has been about 150 students. We've grown, as you can see there, by shy, just shy of 300 over the course of, from the end of last year, or the FTE report of last year to where we are as of today. So we are on track with that 150-ish students that are being enrolled on a year-by-year basis. So we, within that, are looking at two bus driver adds as opposed to the one bus driver add that we initially thought within the original staffing plan. We thought by adding three in one, in last year, that that would capture the growth of not just the flat line of enrollment from the pandemic, we typically add two bus drivers, but we thought that third bus driver might be a, hey, we might need to add this because we're going to have more than expected growth for this year, but hoping that it levels out. We've kind of not leveled out, we've actually pretty much doubled enrollment for the one year making up for the pandemic, and now we're back on track with continuing our enrollment growth as of projections right now. So again, that can change, not saying we have to add two bus drivers. We may add one at the beginning of the year, and then if we see enrollment continue to grow to the point that buses are overcrowded, we may have to add that second one, perhaps in the late fall, into the winter, into the spring, just depending on when that enrollment comes.
Which is what we did this year, we had, there was a mid-year add, that additional driver that was hired this year was a mid-year add, is that right?
I believe, no, there were some that were replacements, and so I know we added two right off the bat this past year, but I believe we added that third pretty early on, if not right at the beginning of the year.
About the year before we had it in here.
But we have had some replacements. Yeah, the year before, we did have a mid-year. I'm going to skip over that central office piece, because we have no administrator, central office administrator adds built into this for next year. As we go down to the student services section, I would say this is probably our most uncertain section here of the, of the report, because I don't know what students are moving in tomorrow with what special needs. We may have a student who moves in tomorrow that has a hearing impairment that requires someone to be with them at all times of the day. We may have a student that moves in that has a vision impairment that requires somebody to be with, to be with them at all times during the day. We don't know who's moving in tomorrow, but we want to make sure that we're fulfilling those student needs and helping them to be successful. So you'll see here what we project. As you can see, this also was the column that had the most red, because we anticipate, and if we don't get those ads then, or if we don't get those needs, then we don't add in those categories. So we do anticipate next year having to add a couple days to our occupational therapy support, and that would be that point four. We do anticipate ELL support, and I want to talk about this for a moment, because you're going to see, this is the line that has probably the most ads built into it if I look at, from the change of the original staffing report to now. We have had an exponential growth in our students that are English language learners and needing the additional support of moving from their current language to learning the English language. That is a huge barrier to these students being successful academically. And so with that, we've had English language learner support. Over the past several years, we've had a very small number of students needing that. I believe that, that number has grown by three or four-fold at this point of students needing additional support. And so this is required of us to do a measurement and assessment of where students are with their English language. The OALPA is the name of the exam that students come into, and they, they take this assessment to get an idea of where are they, what tier essentially are they on, of do they need support, maybe they don't need support. And so we have some students that are on a monitor status, that essentially we don't believe they need additional instructional support, and so those students are integrated right into the core classes as every other typical student. And then we have students who are on a tier that requires additional support, just like our intervention supports within our school settings. This is a student need, and so we address that by ensuring that our students have the adequate supports to be successful. Because of that exponential growth, we do see adding some additional supports for this throughout the time period of this 10-year plan, this nine-year plan, I should say, at this point, we'll be updating it here towards the end. But this is an area where we do feel that we are going to have additional growth with student needs, and that we will need to address that through these human resources. You'll see the mental health, line 23, you'll see a yellow in 2223 and a red in 2324. We do have currently a grant with our Educational Service Center, they actually have the grant that provides us with a, a school social worker that connects our parents to outside resources within our community. That grant is potentially going to expire at the end of this year. It's possible that that grant could be extended, they have applied for it, we're waiting to know if they are extended for that grant through next year. We were planning on that being added on the 2324 school year, but it is possible that this could be a use of our additional ESER dollars, and I don't know, Jeremy, if you want to kind of speak briefly to that at this point, because some of our positions, as we look at them, will be funded more with some of that ESER support, so that we can get these supports in sooner. And, and as I've shared with you before, this, this staffing plan, I like to, in some ways, have to call it a catch-up plan, because we know that we have been understaffed in multiple areas across this staffing report for years. Nurses, mental health supports, counselors within our buildings, these are areas where we have been understaffed for multiple years, really back in the recession when 46 or so positions were cut. It has taken a long time just to get up to that level, let alone the growth we've had in those 10, 15, gosh, 13 years now since, since that recession. And so for us, this is not just a planning for growth, this is also a catch-up plan of the, the adequate supports we need. We're currently at three nurses in our district. Ultimately, this calls for seven, because we should already be at about five or six at this point based on our current enrollment. And so it's not, we know we can't add all these supports immediately, but when we have this opportunity with grants and with, with dollars from other places, that we can speed up the plan, we want to be able to do that while making sure that long-term, that we're not overcompensating for our financial wellness at the time. So Jeremy, do you want to kind of speak a little bit to the ESER dollars?
Yeah, so, we have, we've talked over other meetings about the ESER dollars or the stimulus dollars. For round two, there've, there've kind of been three rounds, round two, we got about 670,000, round three, we got about 1.5 million dollars. And then just recently in January, a new application came out based on what Angie had, had mentioned, I believe it was House Bill 169 was approved by our legislators to put a floor on the amount that could be received for those ESER dollars, or should be received by school districts. An example of a school district that received even less than us would be Olentangie that receives zero. So it was trying to rectify some of those things with that floor. So with the, the, it's not really round four, what they've done is applied additional to rounds two and three, which come with certain timeframes, we're looking to get in total another 1,590,000. So looking at how can we, again, continue to utilize those dollars for things that are already planned, offset potential costs that we would be doing anyway, and, and be able to still that we would be doing anyway and, and be able to still fit within the, the grant requirements? Every grant has specific things that they can be used for. Where we feel that things that have been planned fit into this, specifically in the ESER guidance. It is providing mental health services and supports. There's also a, a piece in it, as Angie mentioned earlier, addressing learning loss. So I think one of the positions in here is an RTI, response to intervention. Now I'm starting to get into some of the acad- academic acronyms, which aren't always my forte.
You've got that one.
But, but the, that position too is something that was already planned, but it, it is specifically going to be helping with what, what has occurred, what we're seeing in the data of potential learning loss. So believe that those pieces, and, and nursing supports, we've been able to help, help offset some of the costs of adding the nurses with those funds for the time being. I always warn with, with grant funds though that we always have to be watching how that looks in the out years because we're doing our best to try to not make it so there's this big balloon. And then when it, when we don't have those funds, okay, what, what do we do? Can we still continue to provide that? So trying to balance all of those pieces where we can utilize these, these funds to be able to provide services that we were planning for anyway, but we're not having to come back to our voters at this point in time to, to continue those. So that's kind of an update on, on those grant funds.
I, I do have a question. I just want to clarify that the money that has come from the, I call it COVID care, ESER or whatever, is unrestricted. Is that correct?
It is more unrestricted than some grants. There's still, I can, I can give you this guidance here, Alice, or I can provide it with the whole board, but there are specific things still that you, you're supposed to be using it for. There is in the ESER dollars cares, there is kind of what you would say, a catch-all of sorts where it says, "other activities necessary to maintain the operations and continuity of, of the services of the district." So that can be, that has been applied very generously in some areas. Not necessarily by us, but I know that there are some places that are applying that very generously.
Thank you.
So as Jeremy highlighted, and I just want to emphasize that point that when we look at the staffing plan, there are not positions that we have put into this staffing plan to say, oh, we're going to use ESER dollars for a couple of years. We're going to add this position now because of the ESER dollars. What we have done is said, we were planning on adding this already within the staffing plan. And these ESER dollars, this is an applicable position that we can add with ESER dollars to help relieve our general funds for these first two years of this. And then also to that point of the mental health specialists and getting me back on track as well for y'all, is noting that we would speed up the add of that mental health specialist, knowing that we're behind with our overall mental health specialists. And I'll note that here in the second tab in just a bit, and it's on the back of your packet, of where we're currently at versus where the recommendations are for mental health supports for our kids. And so this would speed it up, but it's not going to have an overall impact to the five-year forecast in a negative way because it was already planned to be added. And, and so it's going to sit in the forecast the same way. If anything, we're going to see a little bit of a benefit because now we can apply the dollars from the ESER versus our general fund.
So now I'll just add, so the practice then, when we're, we're looking at the five-year forecast period, is what we're doing, and, and hopefully, if, if you've been able to read through the notes of that, is making notes of this cost is being offset by these federal funds. However, it's coming back in, in this year to the operating fund. So sharing those pieces in the forecast as well and doing, doing our very best to plan the ins and outs so we're not caught off guard.
So continuing down towards the bottom of that student services section, you'll see there that if they're not highlighted, these are already in the original staffing plan and are continuing with the adjusted staffing plan at this time. So that includes teacher assistance within our buildings. Again, averaging two per year throughout this timeframe. We do have a couple of spots of threes as you look out because of potential need for addressing some of that growth that we might have. This is just a best guess as we look out. I don't know what you're doing in 2030, 2031, but I certainly don't know what I'm doing at this time. But certainly trying to get a guestimate based off projections, based off what we're seeing in our trends now, to try to look out that far. The nurse clinic support, you'll see the one there that is, that is still in the plan for next year. As we jump down to the high school, you'll see the high school projection for this year, by the end of this year was 1241. Currently, that number of enrolled students in the high school are 1213, is 1213. And so looking down there for next year, we're projected to be around 1272. So I would anticipate we'll be a little below that number. But we do have planned in there the two core ads, an intervention specialist, an elective position, a counselor position, an instructional facilitator. Those were all already in the original forecast. That's not been changed during this timeframe. And I do want to highlight specifically, you know, when we look at core ads, and this will apply to all areas pre-K-12, but those core ads are there and anticipated. If we're seeing the enrollment growth, then we add those positions. If we don't see the enrollment growth, we don't add those positions. I'll highlight down in the elementary section later. We had anticipated adding four elementary teachers this past year. We didn't quite have the numbers because they're slightly below their projections. We added two elementary teachers this past year. So I want to emphasize that because I know, you know, when we look at this kind of a plan, this isn't just a, we're doing this no matter what. This is a, we're doing this based off of our student needs and our enrollment and catching up if there are counselor positions and nurse positions and, and positions like that. And so I just want to highlight that especially as well when we get to the intervention side because this intervention specialist role is based off of student needs. Again, I don't know who's moving in tomorrow. I don't know who's moving in next month or before August 17th or so when we start school next year. And I don't know who's moving in September 1st. But I'm trying to get a, a good estimate of what we have seen and what we believe we may have to add. So if I don't have to add the intervention specialist at the high school setting next year, we're excited for not having to add more supports because we know that's affecting our bottom dollar. But there may be a potential that we don't have planned an intervention in the middle school, and we may have a student in the middle school that moves in, and we don't need the high school, but we need the middle school. And so that will adjust accordingly. As we move down there, another area where we have several ads over the timeframe is that line 35 with our custodians at the high school. We anticipated, and these aren't all ads as a whole. We anticipated this past year with opening the new high school, with it being a bigger building, that we would have a half effective FTE ad. We were adding a full-time person, but not until January. So we would see a half on this FTE and then the other half of that full-time person next year overall within the budget. What we have seen is that we not, not just needed one full-time custodian, but we believe we need two full-time custodians at this point adds to that high school. We have seen within the size of that building, we've gotten the input from our custodians who are doing that job every day. We don't like to pretend to know that we know every last detail of every single thing that people do. But we've had conversations with our custodians and it is very clear that they are very stretched right now. And that's, we know we've run very lean on our custodians. We've run very lean in a lot of positions throughout our district. And to the point of me talking a while ago about being understaffed for several years, they are stretched. And, and in some buildings, they are stretched and we don't have planned ads at this point. We have had assessments done from outside parties over the last several years of our custodians' work based off of square footage, based off of the requirements of their jobs. And we have seen that, yes, it's within reason according to these outside parties, but they're very stretched. We are much more lean than districts our size, our building size. And so efficiencies, we, we looked at picking up some efficiencies within their jobs. But we also looked at over time, as we add students, we're going to have more to have to clean up. And so adding custodians over that timeframe is reasonable. Also wanted to note then, in ending my high school here, we already had built in this 1.67 for tutor supports. That was speaking a while ago to the RTI, to our learning loss within students over those, over the pandemic, but also addressing some of the needs for academic supports for our kids. The 0.67 I want to highlight here because you're going to see a 0.67 in the middle school and a 0.67 in the intermediate school. And what our plan is with this is looking at our libraries. We currently have a media specialist position for our high school. And what we are looking to do next year is to expand that, to have someone in our libraries at all times. This has been something that is continually feedback from our staff of not having somebody in our libraries.
That was cut in 2010, we used to.
Yeah, so this was part of the, the hits from the recession and the, the decisions of the board at that time for having to cut positions to balance a budget. And so with that, we look to be able to expand this so that we would have one media specialist and then two instructional tutors who would be able to work within those library settings. And with that, then three people overall for three buildings. So someone would be in there full-time, but we'd have the media specialist who's overseeing that program to be able to, you know, essentially rotate through the three buildings during the week. And, and at the same time, we have a resource within the buildings at all times. And then lastly, the athletics coordinator, you're going to see this is a split between the high school and the middle school as we've grown with our athletics and extracurricular offerings, having someone in there to additionally support our assistant principal at the middle school and our athletic director at the high school. But also looking at within that position, that the assistant principal at the middle school, really getting them more toward that instructional support within our building as our middle school continues to grow. And so that alleviates some of those duties from the assistant principal at the middle school to then take over some of those athletics there.
Just to add on that, when we had sixth, seventh, and eighth grade with smaller classes than we have now, the structure at that time was the principal, the assistant principal, athletic director, like we have now. We also had a dean of students to handle a lot of the discipline. So when we went to just seventh and eighth grade, we cut that dean of students position out. But to look at class sizes, our current eighth grade, which is our largest class that I've seen go through, is 336 kids. When I was a middle school principal, our largest class was 240 kids with three grades. So we had like two classes, a 220 and a 240. And now we have two that are over 300. So as those classes get bigger, we're getting back up to the number of kids we had with three grades, but we're down a person. And it, what happens is our assistant principal doesn't have anyone to help with the discipline. So he's trying to do the discipline, help the principal with the teacher evaluations and the instructional support for them, plus do all the athletics. And so it, it gets to be a lot.
So jumping down to the middle school, you'll see their projected enrollment for, by the end of the school year was 643. It's currently 663. So that's one building that is over the projection for the 250 homes. As Angie mentioned, that is our largest class size across the district with the eighth grade at 336 students in that grade level. Excuse me. You'll see in the core, there is a yellow bar there. That was two. It is currently showing as three. And I'm going to connect that to the electives that was showing one and is now showing zero. So overall, there were three positions between those two spots. We have looked at, to Angie's point a while ago on teaming, that as Josh framed, the, the middle school principal has looked at that with his staff and the scheduling piece, that we believe we can absorb the elective into a core and therefore create some teaming to support our kids. And so what teaming looks like at the intermediate and middle school setting is that the same group of teachers will have the same group of kids overall. And so you may have, instead of students jumping from period to period within the building with multiple teachers, and so a teacher having, I'm here, you're there, and we both have different kids throughout the day, versus if we have the same group of kids, we can really talk on supporting those kids in more than just, you know, my, my isolated reading time and your isolated math time.
And I'd point out, we had this for years and years. And this is another thing as we've grown and made cuts, that we've absorbed more periods and not been able to do this. So this was something we had at the middle school for years and years.
And so you'll see in that position, then, essentially that's still a wash from a FTE ad standpoint, but just showing the shift there in the differences. The instructional facilitator position that was also applied in there. And I just want to take a moment and highlight that instructional coach, coach position and how important that is for our teachers. We have had instructional coaches over the last several years. We did absorb several positions for, during the pandemic with the budget, making sure that, that we were safe from a financial standpoint to move forward with some of that. But the instructional coaches have been a, a big missing spot for our teachers of the last couple of years. And we've heard that from many of them who have said, this person was so valuable to helping me to be more successful, to coming into my room and maybe seeing some things that I could tweak and do differently to help our kids. Instructional coaches are extremely beneficial to our new teachers who are coming in in their first or second year and learning some of the ropes of education. I, I think any of us could see and understand that in our first couple of years in a row, if we had somebody with us to support us, that we could be much more successful much more quickly. And so knowing that our teachers are the number one impact on academic success for our kids, and that is very research-driven, to provide the additional support for our teachers with resources, to provide them with the additional set of eyes and ears that can help them to grow within their classroom settings is vital to the success of our students and the overall continual improvement and continual success of this school district. And so that instructional coach position is there. We do have coaches built into our elementary again, but that's not until 2324. So we, again, we've tried to do this. We think it's needed for all buildings immediately, but we're trying to stagger this out from a financial perspective to make it, to make it successful.
And I would just add to that, Mark hit on it, but, you know, when, when the state came in and said, we're taking away your funding right now, and this was at the end of the 2019, '20 school year, and I know some of you are on the board, that we didn't know what that was going to look like moving forward. So the reason these were cut is we had some retirement. We had somebody retire, we had somebody move. We were able to move Jenna Crawford at the time into our virtual learning coordinator, and then she's since been hired as a principal. So this was an area where we had some opportunity to absorb some of that because our funding was cut. That funding has been since restored and replenished with these ESER dollars. So that's why we're looking at, we never cut these because we thought they weren't beneficial, but it was a short-term, hey, we've got to do something. The state just came in during a school year, which doesn't happen very often, and took our funding away. What are we going to do moving forward? So we, we think these are extremely, extremely valuable positions. Our core business is education. These are the people that help our teachers with their craft. They get in the classrooms, they help them run groups, they model for them. Very, very important positions. I know Mark and I and the rest of our team are very, very passionate about having these people.
Finishing off in the middle school section there, you will see a halftime secretary that's a restoration of a position that, again, we, we absorbed. We did have two and a half positions for a few years there at the middle school to help with that athletics, that halftime position. And although we could certainly see a need for a full-time position within that, you won't see that added in as a full-time until 2627 with the overall growth and potential additional athletic opportunities at that time. So we look to add a halftime secretary there. Custodians, again, pretty much the same conversation is that middle school moves over to the old high school in the size of that building and getting that adequately staffed to where it was. As a high school, we had five custodians. This would get us to four custodians next year because we're not using every classroom across the building. And so we then would look by 2425 to add an additional custodian at that point to get it back to where the old high school was with custodians of covering that building. And at that time, we're breaking over 700 kids within that, that middle school. Again, projection-wise, we may be well above that based off of where we're trending right now. The intermediate school, looking at that 2223 column. Again, you'll see three core ads there. That was moved from two. So we do see an additional ad. And again, that is attributed back to that teaming approach piece and trying to get some restoration back to that teaming approach at that grade level.
And quite frankly, just to add to that a little bit, we've been focusing a lot of effort there as we continue to look at our, our scores, in particular in language arts there, and really wanting to break out and get some additional time in writing instruction. So as we look across the district, that's, that's a level where we consistently have seen some issues. And so looking to restructure the amount of minutes of instruction they're getting and to be able to do that. So there's, there's a decrease when they move from the time they get in elementary language arts with the way the schedule's structured as they get older. So looking to increase some of that time for our fifth and sixth graders because we're not seeing them maintain the growth that we would like to see, that we typically see at other levels.
And that includes a potential ESER use as well because of the learning differences, the learning losses, and the trend that we're seeing within that sixth grade, especially, providing more support there for our kids. Looking at the elective there. Looking at the elective there, we did have zero built in there, but we have talked a lot over this past several weeks with our music program. Our music teachers are very stretched. As you might recall from conversations we've had, we have pieced together the intermediate school for several years now, where we have an elementary music teacher from Big One Elementary, go to the intermediate for one or two periods of instruction a day for the music. We have a teacher co from GRE for a period of instruction over BWI for music. And then our one teacher there for music is generally there, but now with the orchestra program, she has continued to move up to the middle school and high school. And our high school has continued to come down and support. And so overall, we have pieced that together now for three or four years. But in talking with our music teachers and getting their input on some things, they are very stretched and expecting with the growth and our orchestra continuing to grow at the high school level now, which is an amazing offer for our kids and one that, you know, I think so many are shocked that we haven't had that orchestra program for years. And just now getting that started up over the last few, you know, with that continued growth, we are stretching our music teachers beyond where the capacity is able to be highly successful with our kids. And so we do look at an elective ad there and really focusing on our music program across the board, K-12. I'm not going to spend a ton of time because I think I've kind of already talked about some of the rest of this and it's applicable to the intermediate school. But I do want to highlight that quarter secretary. Currently, we have a three-quarters attendance secretary at the intermediate school. And we added to that a few years ago, I believe, no, I think it was two years ago. It was a halftime to a point seven-five, and we look to shift that then to a full-time position next year. And then custodians, as they move from the intermediate building to the middle school, that that is a larger building, again, getting custodial group up to the size that it currently is for that building. Lastly, I want to talk about the elementary overall. And I say overall because you'll see each building down below, but we don't add them by building because it's so much harder to know exactly what each building is going to look like. So we try to go off of that overall projection. Our overall projection for this year, by the end of the year, was sixteen seventy-nine. Right now, it's sixteen twenty-six. And so we're about fifty students off, fifty-three students off with that projection at this time. But what we're looking at more specifically at the elementary is it's a lot tougher, and we've talked about this, of staffing elementary schools because we have the grade levels and each of the buildings K-four. And so when we have a certain number of kids move into any random grade level in any of those buildings, depending on how many teachers we have there, we may have to continue to add to reach our aspirational goals. And as a reminder, K-three, K-four, K-three, sorry, twenty-five students per class, starting in fourth grade and up to eighth grade is twenty-seven students. And then in our high school, twenty-nine students is kind of our aspirational goal. That's our limit of where we like to be with class size, especially as we focus on our vision of personalizing learning, engaging our students in their learning, where if we were to pack thirty, forty students in a classroom, you're not going to get that personalized approach with our kids.
And I can tell you from teaching second and third grade over the last month, when you're pulling them up in small reading groups and teaching at their level, and I had a third grade class last week where I had kids who were probably where I would expect the first grader to be and some where I would expect a middle schooler to be. So, you know, it's really doing a disservice to those kids to do whole group reading instruction because they have very, very different needs. But when you're trying to pull them up in their individual group, it makes a huge difference if you have twenty-five kids in a class or thirty kids in a class. That's another whole group. So when you think about the logistics of that, it's one thing to think of it just hypothetically, but when you live it, you definitely see the impact because our teachers do a phenomenal job of, they're running a group up here, but they're also having to monitor and oversee the independent learning stations that the other kids are engaged in. And you throw five more kids into any of those, and it's a big deal. So we definitely look at that. And to Mark's point, you know, research says you get above five hundred kids in an elementary, you start to see a decline in academics, and that's really a sweet spot for elementaries. So we like the size of our buildings. But, you know, districts that have maybe just big elementaries where you have all second grade in one building, you could potentially add less second grade teachers with growth because you have more room to distribute kids versus if I get them spread out over four buildings. So definitely our smaller elementaries that we have are great. Love them as a mom, love them as a educator, but certainly they provide challenges from a staffing standpoint. So I always just like to point that out because, like anything, there are pros and cons. And with Mark watching the staffing like he does all spring and summer on those grade levels every time somebody evolves, and we often wait to make those ads later because we don't want to add early and maybe we don't need to spend that money. But it's definitely a struggle. There's a, there's a real balance there because the way the job market's heading, the later we wait, we've been able to get good elementary candidates, not so, there's not the large, as large of a pool at the higher levels we've seen in the past. But as that continues to become more and more challenging and wanting to get the best candidates, also the longer we wait, the, you know, some of those great people are snatched up already. So the delicate balance between not pulling the trigger too early on those ads from a financial standpoint, but also wanting to make sure we're getting the best quality educators we can for our kids.
So just note there, again, we had four built in last year. You'll see the red for the two that we added. And to Angie's point, again, if the enrollment's not there, we try not to add it. But again, there's a balance between what, you know, when do we make this decision to get it posted and get interviews started and get people hired versus the first day of school coming up quickly? And also the quality of the candidates at that point. And so we continue to look at that. That's usually our last postings is the elementary. And then also our tutor spots are often our last postings because those are certified teachers, but they're coming in without a salary of a teacher and without the benefits of a teacher. And so those are pieces that we try to look at throughout the year. I will say in my document that I track very specifically enrollment. Right now, I'm just looking at moving up kindergarten to first grade, first grade current enrollment to second grade and so on. And just based off of that, we're looking at best-case scenario only having to add one. And that's with no growth. And worst-case scenario, having to add up to nine. And so that all depends on how enrollment goes. I tried to pick a kind of a good sweet spot there with the six. I'm hopeful that we're able to make it work with five or four, three or two. But we will see how that goes with enrollment. And then I'm going to note there, the remaining rest of the document, again, pretty self-explanatory with the exception, I want to note there, the instructional facilitator is an RTI. Jeremy spoke to that. This assessment coordinator and RTI coordinator was built in. This would be someone to support and review that data, bringing that to our teachers and our team. We could use our ESSR dollars for that, and we do look to use our ESSR dollars to help with that learning loss. But this was a position that was built in before that. And then you'll see the three tutor spots here. This is the same setup as what we talked about with our secondary at our high school, middle school, intermediate. With our elementary school, we look to add a media specialist, certified teacher, certified media specialist for that position, and then three tutors. So the elective is noting that we went from two media specialists and two tutors to one media specialist with three tutors is what we're looking at just from a financial standpoint, as well as being able to make that work, that we have a certified person moving through those four elementary schools, but then we'd have somebody staffing those buildings at all times. And then that kind of takes us to our bottom line. Right now, our early learning center is not looking to need another preschool teacher for next year. Actually, our numbers at the moment are tracking towards potentially being able to not have to have that half, but we've got a whole summer to go through. So we're potentially going to still be at that half. I don't anticipate an add as of this time there. So bottom line, just highlighting again, we try to look at the total FTE ads, forty-two point one six when you add everything up there across the board. And then when we look down below, you'll see where are those staffing ads from a percentage standpoint and a number standpoint overall over the ten years for each of those positions. So we look at our OC six ninety-sixes as our food services. Our OC five twenty-four is our custodians and maintenance and mechanics and bus drivers. And then our support staff, our teacher assistants, as well as our secretaries. Our BWEA is our teacher ads. We have ESC purchase service supports. That's oftentimes all of our student services section that you saw in there. And then our admin ads over the ten-year picture as well. The last thing I want to highlight is that last page of your packet. And this is what I was alluding to earlier today when I spoke to our mental health and our nurse supports. This has been a beneficial visual for our board over the last several years. And just looking at the very top, when we started this plan of supporting with more ads, the enrollment at the time was thirty-eight oh one. We had one nurse at that time, so we had a thirty-eight oh one to one nurse ratio. And you'll see that below in this first chart. We then got to, as of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we have three nurses with the forty-two, forty-seven at the time I did that enrollment piece. That's actually forty-two ninety now. And so you'll see that was down to about fourteen sixteen. The national recommendation for ratios of students to nurses is seven hundred and fifty. So we're about halfway there. But looking at our overall, our plan over the ten-year picture is to look at seven nurses across the district. And then you'll see there that will get us to about one nurse for eight hundred and seventy kids. So a lot more reasonable to that seven fifty recommendation, but certainly a work in progress to get there. I would love to have added those seven nurses already. But again, we're trying to stagger this plan to get to where we want to be by the end of this picture. And lastly, from a mental health standpoint, you'll see the same thing there. The mental health, the national recommendation for mental health supports to our kids, including school counselors and overall mental health specialists in the district is where we count all these positions. Two hundred and fifty kids for every mental health specialist within the school setting. And so that we were at six hundred and sixty-one at the beginning of this picture in eighteen nineteen. We're currently at about four hundred and twenty-five students for each with ten counselors across our district. That again includes all of our school counselors and then our mental health specialists in the district, at the district level. And then that would get us to ultimately this plan, getting us to two hundred and forty-nine kids per counselor with twenty-one total counselors by the end of the projections, if everything shakes out based off of how we think it will or how we best know that it will at this time. That's a lot of information. I certainly don't anticipate that you'll have every last question right now. But any, I guess, hot questions to ask at this moment, burning questions that you have? And certainly, if you'd like to sit down and kind of go through this more in detail, I'm more than happy to do that anytime. Just let me know.
I just want to know, I am reading this right. On the elementary overall, you're showing sixteen seventy-nine as the expected. Sixteen twenty-six is the actual for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right.
You're showing seventeen eighteen as the estimated for twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And you adjusted the hiring by not filling the two-point-five since you didn't hit the sixteen seventy-nine.
We adjusted by not adding two positions, yes.
Right.
We actually, I think, originally had fourteen in the original staffing plan. Right now, we're at sixteen because we added four for next year, but we reduced two. So it's a four student, or four teacher difference. But again, this is just off of what I think is going to happen.
Right.
I can tell you right now, I'm going to go off on a limb here and say that we're not going to be at seventeen hundred and eighteen kids in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. But that's right now the projection of where they think it's going to go. We're already close to that number. I don't see our growth stopping at the elementary level, but we'll see.
Well, the reason I'm asking is if you go farther back, the conversion of BWIS to an elementary, you've got twenty-point-five anticipated
Yes.
positions over the, over the ten years. And that and the thirty-six point five at the other elementaries over that ten-year period, that's fifty-seven positions, but the estimate of increased enrollments, thirty-nine.
Yeah. And so one thing I want to highlight there, though, is that the core teachers, so, and thank you for pointing that out on the new elementary, and that was the plan and still is the plan as of now unless we get different board direction, is that BWI will become an elementary school ultimately throughout this plan, this project plan. And so you'll note there that in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year when we anticipate opening that new elementary, there are zero core ads. And that's because we expect to have a redistribution as we do when PRE opened. We had a redistribution, a reassignment of our teachers. We don't anticipate that that building's going to open with five hundred different kids because the overall elementary number stays the same of what that is anticipated to be. So we expect based off of where we move students that we're not going to need necessarily core ads for that elementary school. We're going to pull teachers from different buildings, just like the kids are coming from different buildings.
For example, right now, PRE.
Twenty-point-five is in the thirty-five point five.
The twenty-point-five is those numbers. So we will expect to have to have a principal for that building. We expect to have to have an intervention specialist, our electives for music PE. Yeah, so that's where those twenty-point-five come from.
That's where the little buildings get you. Because every time, and I think we talked about that when Harrison Street was a K-four, we still have to have those positions, but we don't have the capacity to service five hundred kids there like we do at GRE or PRE. So like right now, PRE, and we purposely did this, but then we got hit even harder than what the projection showed there in that area, is remember when we did the redistricting, we didn't want to hit families any more than we had to with multiple moves? So we knew we were redistricting PRE to be very crowded. So like their library right now is a classroom already, which obviously that's not a good long-term plan. But that was made with the intention that BWI would open and some of those kids would go back over there. To Mark's point, taking those teachers. But we still need art, music, PE, STEM, and all those different types of positions, custodians, that won't move.
Right.
And the only other thing I would mention, it's a very in-depth report. Is there any way, as an example, say at the for the intermediate, you're showing what the full-time equivalent adds, but over here where it's core in this column, can you show what employees we have in those position in those buildings?
So looking at, kind of like morphing that with the FTE report, so putting in here are the total right now. Here's what we anticipate to add.
Right.
I could certainly look at trying to kind of get a hybrid of those documents together.
Yeah, we'd make it more informative.
Sure.
Do they all have the FTE report? And we can share that just so you have it for now until you can do that, maybe to the new people if they.
I don't know as if they have it.
They receded within the orientation packet, so it's in there. But we also gave you a ton of things at that time. Certainly let me know, though, if you need another copy, I can get that to you.
And that has all the positions plus enrollment at that time.
Yeah, that, I could certainly look at trying to get a good hybrid there for the, for the board. Okay, any other questions on our staffing plan?
I think, I just want to reiterate, I know Mark said it a couple of times, but he does such a nice job of looking at. I mean, when we look at the numbers for next year, because again, we have what we had to add last year, which we knew we had some on the bubble and we ended up not needing to. But then we've added kids to those classes all year. And so, you know, when we look at those and we have elementary sections and buildings that are already at twenty-five, so if we have, for example, first grades where they're twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, we're probably going to have to add a fourth section as they move to the next grade. And so that's where, again, if we look at all that, we try to get by where we can, you know, if it's not as fast-growing or we haven't seen as many kids move in there. And we hope to not have to do that. But it's very, it's very difficult to manage. And we don't sit around and go, man, we really hope, we need to add nine elementary teachers and do all those interviews and find nine great people. So certainly our goal would be to not have to do that. But that's something he watches with the principals really closely because we also don't want to start the year with classes that are already over our aspirational goal or right at our aspirational goal, knowing that we're continuing to see, as I shared, kids that are continuing to move in throughout the school year.
And if we did that, then we would have students that essentially would start with a teacher, and then we'd have to redistribute our kids whenever that would come. Where, you know, if we were at thirty kids per grade, per class at that point, we're going to have to take five kids out of those four classes and put them into a separate class and now start over with another teacher. And so it is a delicate balance, and that's why we end up with some class sizes at twenty-three to start the year, but they're twenty-five to end. And some might start at twenty-three and end at twenty-one because they had a few students withdraw from that specific class. But that's kind of the beauty and also the challenge of elementary schools.
So I guess where we are to wrap this up, and as Mark said, happy to answer any questions, but we're in hiring season right now, and it's more critical than ever because of the amount of candidates that we're seeing decrease in our field as everywhere. So we need to get moving with posting some of these. And we just wanted to make sure, again, especially with new board members and getting us all aligned on, we need to move forward. For example, that ELL support, we'd like to move, those are very, very hard to find, so we'd like to move forward with that. We know we need to provide that support for those kids. We'd like to get moving on securing a person. So I guess just at this point, you know, So I guess just at this point, you know, I don't know unless you would feel comfortable that we need any type of formal motion, but just, are there any issues with us moving forward with the staffing plan and the way that we described, which would be, again, that we're looking at the ones we know we need to add, getting those posted, starting to screen candidates, we have a very long process, which includes posting internally, posting externally, doing a screener where we screen lots and lots of people to look for core values, then bringing in those people that make it past the screener and do well to an initial interview, sometimes another one in between if it's close, and then a final one here at our level. So it's a very, very long process for every spot we hire. Mark does a phenomenal job with our principals and directors of putting a lot of time into that and really trying to get the best people for our kids. So we would like to get started on it, so we're competing with other districts right now to get those good people, and just want to make sure you're good with us moving forward with that.
I personally think you guys have always shown, I mean, an incredible amount of, you know, thought and planning that goes into all of this, very, very thorough, and always presenting us a very thorough picture of the plan. And as someone who is also trying to hire in my position, I know what a struggle it is right now, so I mean, I think absolutely get started on what you need to do to get people in place.
Any other thoughts, questions on this?
You got to have teachers.
Yeah.
I don't have any objection to the plan, and good luck.
I appreciate that, and I would just be remiss if I didn't say a quick thank you to our principals, to our teachers, to our assistants, to our bus drivers, to our custodians. Every time we add a student into the building, they welcome them with open arms, they want to immediately establish that safe welcoming learning environment for our kids and for the families, and that's continual positive feedback we get from families is how amazing they are received, and also just the amount of additional challenge that that might create to any random staff member that you want to pick within our district that will have the opportunity to work with that student. And so just appreciate all the effort, it's not just a single person or a single group even within our district, it is a whole effort of our employees, so I want to thank them for all of their work with that.
I just want to encourage you, from the feedback that I've heard from community members and parents that have moved from other districts here, for the warmth and the love that they feel with the staff and the atmosphere, that it's happy and light and fun. So I just want to give you that encouragement. Also, good luck, God bless you in finding good, happy teachers.
Thank you.
And more staff.
It is the most important thing that we do, hiring staff to work with our kids. We take it very, very seriously, so appreciate that feedback, and we'll look forward to getting that started. And that is at 9:43, Mr. President. That is the end of my report, unless you have anything else. We did skip over board committees, which probably should have been under board, but if you want to hit that now?
We can move that.
Do you want to do it when we get to board?
We'll move that and add that down to number eight.
Okay. So...
Could I request a five-minute break?
We can go into recess for five minutes, yes. Do we need to vote on that? Or can I just order it being the president?
I think, I think according to my cheat sheet, there should be a motion and a second.
Are you making a motion?
I would like a motion for a five-minute break.
A second?
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsh?
Yes.
Ms. Graziosi?
Yes.
Ms. Nix?
Yes.
All right.
I just need to stand up. I guess...
We'll be back in session now. That brings us to item seven, Treasurer's Report.
I think as far as financial responsibility during the superintendent's report, I've shared all I need to share for today.
All righty. Takes us to number eight, Bylaw and Policy Discussion on the Board Members' Policies. I'm sure there's at least one question. Did we successfully do our homework?
Well, yes. Would you like for me to go ahead with what I found in some of the information?
Well, in hopes that we... Steve had to leave for a flight. I'm sure there's going to be some things that each one of us found duplicates
Probably.
...of issues. So, yeah, I guess you can start and then we'll find out if somebody else sees it that way.
Well, some of it was just, for instance, there is no 0170, which was referred to under 0100, under President and Vice President. And it referred to bylaw 0170, and there is no 0170. Under Policy 0113, the address needs changed from Baumann Street to 110 Tippet.
Not to interrupt, but maybe we can move our board office there.
Oh.
That way, we don't have to change the address.
Yeah.
Y'all are welcome to move back over there.
Oh, no, you can be here.
We got a little crowded over there. It was fun being with the kids, but they need in our offices.
The next one that I found that I had a question about was under Policy 0116, the affiliation. This bylaw states that one of our Big Walnut Board members will also represent us at the DAC program. The actual ORC states that a representative is appointed by the Big Walnut Board of Education. Policy 0122.1 says, member powers, this is an interesting bylaw and may prompt a discussion about... Oh, I'm sorry, I went to the next one. The ORC states that a representative is appointed by the Big Walnut Board of Education. And I was a little bit confused why the representative is not someone from the board.
And I think we changed that policy, but I guess we didn't catch it in this bylaw. But that was changed, I guess it's been several years ago, that they were really trying to make sure that the Career Center boards had a diverse representation from business and different areas. And so, boards then became able to either appoint one of their own members or to appoint somebody else to represent them. And so, Bryce Clausen was appointed by our board and has done that, I think he's in year two. Three? Yeah. Jim Helder did that previously. So, as someone who had been on this board previously but wasn't on this board at the time he was appointed over there. So, we've not had a sitting board member on there for a while. One of the challenges, and obviously, you know, there's conversation around when board meetings are here, but one of the challenges is they meet at the same time as our evening meetings. But then also just, we didn't, I think, have a board member that felt like they were able to commit to that and the areas they were looking for in those new criteria for the Career Center Board.
I think it may also speak to and kind of expound upon that piece in bylaw 0157, where it talks about appointment to Joint Vocational School District Board. So, it might add further clarification on that.
Yeah, there were several items that were contradicted.
Well, it's duly noted that we need to fix 0116.
Under 0123, Code of Ethics, Code of Conduct, any reference to the NSBA being something we follow due to their controversial views of parents as domestic terrorists, I would like for that to be removed from our policy.
I'm sorry, could you repeat which number that was again?
0123, under Code of Ethics.
And I will point out, Mark and I were just talking, so we have updated the... It's probably good to look at the bylaws because we've done a lot of policy updates over the last several years. We don't typically get a lot of things to update the bylaws externally, so we have not looked at the bylaws in a while.
Right.
So, you're probably going to see more discrepancies there than in the policies with what's current, if that makes sense.
Right. It was... There was quite a bit of contradiction between the two. The next one I have is 0131, under Legislative. It says the ORC references 3313.20 in this code is about locker searches, and it actually has nothing to do with the actual code itself, which is about rulemaking and voting.
So, you're saying the board policy, bylaw policy
Right.
...doesn't match
Right. They...
ORC.
Plus, now, we don't have lockers in the high school anyways.
We do have some.
Okay. I'll let somebody else take the turn. Sorry, I have about five more, but I'm sure some...
Well, let's go through the five and if that's handled by...
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. The next one is 0148.1, Board Staff Communications. This says that staff can only communicate to the board through the superintendent. I feel that there must be an open line of communication between all levels of the school with the board. 0148.2, Visits to the Schools by Board Members. This bylaw says that board members can visit unofficial with approval from the principal of the building. Well, we know cases where that has not been allowed. Had some parents that have reached out and said they've tried to get a visit to the school and they were not allowed in.
Parents or board members?
Well, I'm getting to that.
Oh, because it's a parent.
I'll let Angie speak to her experience.
Well, I think I spoke to Mrs. Hamburg about that. There is a few things in the very beginning. Mark, Mr. Cooper talked about some of the things. I'd like to look, and this might be a longer effort of looking at definitions, which are very important. As we know, throughout the years, definitions have taken on meanings or lives of themselves. So, I would like to look at some definitions, and maybe we could just add to them. And some of those you did mention, Mr. Cooper, diversity, inclusion, equity. What does SEL mean? If we're looking at justice and discipline, might be something later on in policies, like how we view that. So, those are just a little bit of going over definitions. I do have a couple other items. In Policy 1100, District Organization, I believe that this policy should be edited to include a channel for teachers to submit questions and concerns directly to the school board. Possibly, we can consider an anonymous communication channel. I do understand we have a chain of command and organizational hierarchy. I think I got shut off. A hierarchy that our teachers and staff do need to follow, a protocol, but I think that we could have a look at having a communication to the board members. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, just maybe it was other feedback.
But I'm right here. Can you hear in the back of the room?
I would like to look over, or maybe we can form a committee to speak about 1100, Assessment of District Goals. This policy says the board should be... Should work with the administration to establish goals. Our new board members should consider if the superintendents or the professional staff, which may include the whole child and that the Eagle profile, to make sure that this aligns with the parents and communities. But in general, I believe this policy is fine in itself.
You said 1100?
1100?
It's under Administration.
Oh, sorry, I was still... I was...
Oh, yeah.
Gotcha.
Skip.
I got you.
Sorry about that. I just want to read this policy, the 1210, Board Superintendent Relationship. The Board of Education believes that in general, it is the primary duty of the board to establish policies and that of the superintendent to administer such policies. Policy should not be originated or changed without the recommendation of the superintendent. The superintendent should be given the latitude to determine the best method of these... Of implementing these policies. There's several sentences in there that seem to conflict each other, so I would like to work on clarification on that board policy. Policy 1520, Employment of Administrators. Let's look closely at this policy as it was updated in February 18, 2020. If we could now, maybe with some of these other amendments to the policies, what has changed or the revisions that were taking place?
Sorry, what was the number on that?
That is...
1520?
1530, Evaluation of Principals and Other Administrators. This policy changed on May 18, 2017. If we could go over what has been changed and what evaluations we're currently doing and who writes the administrations or writes the evaluations?
The state.
State? Okay.
So, all of the evaluations are state documents?
Principals are...
Superintendent's is yours, made by the state?
There is an O S S, but we do a goal, one that we use.
And who...
This one wouldn't change, what she's asking about was because the state changed to the Ohio Principal Evaluations.
Who creates that evaluation?
OD and E or General Assembly, which one?
You talking about mine?
Uh-huh. Any superintendent.
No.
We just use a goal-setting one
We do that.
With goals based off the work plan internally.
So, the board designs the evaluation, is what you're saying, Sherri?
We did it together years ago, and then there was a lot of redundancy in the different parts, and so that's the part that we continue to use.
As we took our ethics training recently, number 1662, Anti-Harassment, I think maybe collectively, we could look at this. This is a very long policy. Thirteen different codes are referenced, from ORC to USC to CFR to the NSBA. Maybe we could just simplify this and to align with the duplicate ORC codes or just want to maybe review that policy. That's what I have so far.
That's your minor list.
That's the minor list.
I did not have anything specifically that wasn't covered already, I don't believe. I know one item that was brought to our attention or I've heard about. I'm trying to get the number here.
Mrs. Dorsh, while you're looking, there was one other concern that a resident brought up in our three minutes when we have public participation, that is it a requirement for the participant to state their address?
I'm going to take that up
Okay.
In a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, 1691.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, most of mine have been covered by Alice. I think, number one, did you get out of chapters, the first chapter, on some of your issues?
I did.
Okay.
Yes.
I think you get an E for effort.
She jumped in.
But I do have to mark you down to a C because you didn't follow instructions.
Sorry.
Numerical order.
I think it's apparent that we need to do an in-depth review and corrections on those. If you give me your... Each one of you email me the policy number, and you can get out of... Outside of the first chapter, just go through at your leisure. And then I'll create a list, and I'll let Steve know to do the same. It's going to be a long morning if we attempt to do anything with these today, with the exception of possibly the one I'll address in a little bit. Is that cohesive with you guys? And then we'll address it at either a special meeting, work session, or we'll fit it in the agenda at a future meeting, not a distant future meeting, one pretty close.
I think several of these are...
There are more corrections than there are...
Yeah, some of them, I think, are relatively simple. There's a few that'll probably involve some conversation, but since we have, what is it, item eight, board policy on every agenda, I think, you know, maybe, I don't know if this next meeting, if there's room on that agenda, but, you know, if each meeting, we try to tackle a couple that involve conversation. If we know in advance what ones we will be discussing, then we can kind of gather our thoughts about those and come kind of prepared to talk specifics and make a decision.
That'll be the compilation of
Yeah.
Whatever I receive. Yeah, we might be able to handle... We'll see if that will work first before establishing a special meeting. I think it's going to be kind of... It's going to be cumbersome for one because it's 13 years' worth of policy that wasn't...
A lot of it has been updated.
It's been... Well, I think what the problem is, from what I've seen in it, when Neola sent the changes, those changes were made, but nobody has looked at the policies overall since 2009, and some errors entered in there. It's like the Alice's question on DAC, you know? The original way was in there from 2009.
Yeah, I think the bylaws are very outdated compared to the policies. We have not done much with the bylaws.
Right.
So, that's probably the biggest barrier.
And the bylaws are a different process versus Neola's recommendations are specific to policies unless there's a bylaw that violates any recent legislation. And so, I do want to highlight specifically, when Neola brings, and they will continue to bring, we actually have some January changes based off of recent legislation. So, we will have some of these... Some of these might be the same policies that will need revisions anyway. And so, understanding that we may be starting to bring some policies from the January update that just occurred, getting this board moving, but then also some policy updates that are going to be required based off of legislation that we'll be able to review. But just noting that typically, Neola has a policy that goes against a different policy. They tell you to update, and I will say, a lot of policies are redundant because it depends on if it applies to students, to professional staff, to the administration, to the, you know, all the different chapters that you'll see there. And so, you may have a policy that applies to all of those, and so therefore, you have to update all of the policies. One of the biggest ones that threw us, and it was brought up on the anti-harassment, 2266 was a new policy that was added a few years ago with Title IX, and that was based off of federal legislation and a federal mandate essentially, which has changed.
Yep.
And they anticipate that again changing here within the next year or so. And so, that's one that we just constantly have to revisit, but because 2266 is a new policy under Title IX, that then impacted the 1662 and some of the other... There's an anti-harassment in every section related to the people within the district. And so, you know, they caught 2266, and then we were... We had to go back. They put the cart before the horse on that one, and that's what the federal government required because they required immediate action on that policy, and then they had to go back and correct then the anti-harassment, so those came later. But I do anticipate that one, the Title IX is probably going to continue to go back and forth in the coming years.
The only one that I had that might have been a little different that I'd like to address is 0161, which is the parliamentary authority. And I believe it was, first of all, Robert's Rules. Everybody... If you go back and look at Robert's Rules and the history of Robert's Rules, Robert's Rules was... Were established for the minority on any board. It balances out the... A little bit of the superiority of the majority and grants a little bit of greater authority to the minority on that board. With that said, they had a revision in 2013 or it might even been before that, where instead of the formality of a board where the speaker stands up and speaks, kind of like what you see in Congress, they came up with a subsection of Robert's Rules for small boards, 21 members or under. So, when 0161 says we'll follow Robert's Rules, which one are we going to follow is what this board is going to have to decide. And I believe it's Rule 49 of Robert's Rules is what establishes the small boards. And I think that's the only one that was different other than...
The public participation.
Pardon me?
The public participation.
Yeah, I'll get to that in just a second. Everybody get me a list of the ones that... And I'll compile that list so we're not duplicating, and then we will address them through the agenda, or item eight. The item that was... Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. The item, the board committee's discussion from item six that was moved to item eight. I've had requests... Communication is key to anything, and I've had some public requests, and I think it's a good idea that there be a committee to allow stakeholders to have discussion. Oh, there was one other board policy. It's my reading of the... And I don't think I printed it out, but the committee meetings historically weren't looked at as a meeting in the sense that you took meeting minutes and publicized it.
If they're board committees, they are. So, the only board committee we have
Even with two members?
You can have two. If you get to three, you have to have it be a board committee. You can have two.
Well, I saw a policy that dictated that all board committees advertise
Mm-hmm.
and meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Chairman
Part by law.
Chairman and co-chair.
So, we always, when we do, which we haven't done as much with facilities as with the point we're at, but we always post the agenda, things like we do with the board meetings.
Okay.
Yeah.
At any rate.
If you want to form a board committee, we don't do that with our administrative committees, but if you want to form a board committee and call it a board committee, then you can have as many board members as you want on it. You just have to give notice and post the agenda and all that.
Well, I think we need to... I'll take your guys' opinion, but I believe that we need to have a committee of the community, kind of like a steering committee. It might benefit and shorten some of the meetings. Currently, if somebody... If a stakeholder wants to let the board know something, they're allowed to get up to that podium and speak, but that's not a communication because there's no two ways supposed to take place. This committee, anybody can be on it. My vision would be, anybody can be on it and hash out some of those issues that we currently hear coming from the public. Any thoughts on that?
I think that we should look into that. Would those be considered ad hoc committees that might be temporary, or would those be committees that we would continue?
I think it could be an ad hoc, and then if we see that it's a great value, we can make it a standing committee.
Are there any committees that you would like to start now or discuss now in this board meeting?
Well, interesting you should say that. Steve's not going to be here next Thursday, and you won't be here next Thursday. Is anybody else not planning on being here next Thursday? So, to have a voice in it, yeah, I was hoping to get to this before Steve left, so that we'd have all five members. But, yeah, I think we need the committee.
For the stakeholders to be able to speak, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It can be the We Are Big Walnut Committee. Open to the public, limited to... You would have to limit it, so limited to 25 members.
And that's a board committee that you guys are going to run then? As opposed to us?
Yes, I would think so. I mean, you have enough.
I'd be happy to not run it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, no. It would be a board committee. When you said that, though, I've... I don't know as if there were some problems with the number of meetings and the commitment to those, and the committee could have a chair or co-chair, and whoever wants to come in can come in or not. But it wouldn't... I'm just trying to think of the simplest way to get the communication from the community to the board if there are issues.
Would this committee, like if we had an ad hoc committee right now, could we say we would like to start this? We would like to receive feedback from the community? Like all the structure of that, would that all have to be in place before we start a committee? I guess like if we say we're going to... We'd like to have a Big Walnut stakeholder meetings or committee, would we line... Have that all lined out now, or would it be better to...
You have to create the committee first.
Create the committee, but when creating the committee, do you have to have the whole structure of the committee before?
Do you just have to pass a board resolution that you want a board committee by that name?
Well, I feel like maybe what you're kind of getting at, and like my first inclination on this is that's... I mean, that can encompass so many... on this is, that's, I mean, that can encompass so many different things, like the focus of it is so broad, like I can't comprehend how that would be super effective. Or it might take a long time to even get to, like, okay, here's what the specific issues are. I mean, I think in talking about two-way communication already, we do have lots of stakeholders, you know, whether it's, you know, parents or community members, business owners, email board members and administrators and let us know if they have concerns or issues. And I think, you know, we can't, we don't have any, you know, board response necessarily that goes back to them, but individually, we can, you know, communicate with people about concerns and opinions and things like that. I also know that community members have, you know, had concerns and scheduled meetings with the administration in the past and talked about certain things. So I think, I mean, I think there's already some, some two-way communication. I think in a meeting or in a specific committee, having something that broad, it, it might be, like I said, hard to get anything done. I don't know if it would be better if there are specific concerns out there that we feel like, okay, we need a special committee to address this, kind of like putting together the pandemic response committee, you know? I think that was a subset maybe of like the safety committee, but we, we do already have a lot of community involvement in our various committees, but I think it might be more productive to determine if there's, you know, one or three or five specific topics that people want to address, and we, you know, find people who want to come and talk about that. Because too, if, you know, you have just everyone coming with their issues, and okay, we end up spending the whole time talking about this, you'll still have people who go away feeling like, I wasn't heard, my concern, isn't that my concern, is this, and that wasn't even addressed in this meeting, so.
Yeah, I think what you're, keeping it smaller in scope of what the meeting is and maybe having, I think it's good, I think it's a good generally up here, but then to keep it in a small scope where it might be, we have two facilitators that answer the emails, and then we say, okay, these are the, these are the top five topics, and this is all we're talking about, or the top three, or this is the number one topic, and we limit it to a time and have the structure, some structure. So I think it's important to have state some structure.
Well, a committee would be structured, but it's, it's hard to know a topic. If you, if you know a topic exists, then you already know the problems there. Getting the concerns from the residents tells you, or the community tells you what the topics are going to be, that's why it would need to be broad.
But we get that already, don't we?
No. Board policy currently is, if you get a complaint as a board member, okay, what are you supposed to do? Supposed to send it to the administration, because individually, we have no power outside of this meeting right here, or a committee meeting. So we, through the board policy, we're not supposed to do a two-way communication with the public anywhere, here or outside of here.
We can and speak our own opinion, like my, my thoughts on this, or I, I, I respect your opinion, I'm very happy that you brought that to my attention, and I'll keep my eyes, I mean, we are allowed to do that. We can't speak on behalf of the board. Like, I can't speak for the full board. I am me, I have my opinions, and I have one vote, and, you know, I will, I will do what I can do, but I cannot speak for the board.
Correct.
And I think that's what everyone's aware of, and we do.
Well, board policy also dictates that if there is a complaint, that you don't respond, you send it to the superintendent. Believe me, it's in there.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not, but I don't understand what the problem is. Are you, are you trying to say that?
I'm trying to create an avenue for the, instead of having our meetings go extremely long from public participation on hot topic issues, to, to have a venue where board members have been charged to go listen and have communication with the public, short of having it in a meeting.
I don't feel like any of our meetings have gone excessively long because of public participation. I think we've had a few that we've had to extend to 30 minutes, but I think that's been few and far between.
I think there is a sense from the parents or the people in public participation that it is a one-way street, that they get up and speak, and then they...
Right, and that's...
Might not get those answers.
Sure.
So I think that's what Doug's trying to say, or what I'm trying to say as a parent, to have that communication to say, well, hey Doug, what do you think about what, 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 this is what's going on, can we get back to this? So having more of a two-way communication, and I understand it, it could go sideways very easily, so if we don't have some structure, and I suppose if we, you know, we start the committee, and then whoever would like to be on that committee here, then we can carry forth and, you know, take the individuals that would like to also participate on that committee.
What's your thoughts, Alice?
A call to order, I think what needs to be decided, yes or no. I support anything that opens up the community for access and information.
One of my cons, I don't know if it's a concern, but I, I mean, it, I am someone who, like my, I like to think through things, I, over time, you know, ponder things and come up with different stuff, and like to get feedback, or read, or just, just kind of think, so it's hard to know. Not having discussed this before, what potential issues there may be, I guess one of the thoughts that I have is setting this up and the structure of it, like who, who will be in charge of it, who's going to kind of set the format, or kind of decide how it would happen if it does happen, just because not everybody is, is good at, you know, all things. Not everybody is good at designing how this would happen, like, okay, everyone would be invited, and then people who have concerns would have five minutes to speak, or like, how, how would you set it up, and do any of us have that skill or capability of determining how that would happen and what the best approach would be, and, you know, because it, it could be messy.
I think, you don't want to be a co-chair on it if it's established, right?
I would like to make a motion for a community committee to be established as a board committee. I might not be saying this the right the way, so I'd like to make a motion to establish that committee, and I would nominate myself to run that committee and Alice to be a second co-chair.
And this is a standing committee or an ad hoc?
This will be a standing committee.
Standing meaning permanent?
Permanent committee.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
What would your expectation be of us? Are we attending? Are you going to gather a bunch of concerns and then hand them to us to fix, or tell us how to fix them, or are we just not involved at all?
I would like to personally work with you, Angie, and I would like communication, I can bring you the issues, we can talk about it, the three of us, if you'd like.
Typically, I mean, what I'm hearing described are typically like administrative things, but...
I'm...
That's why I'm just curious.
I will work with the chairman, and you're more than welcome. It won't be a requirement for you to participate. If you want to, that's fine. It's going to be informative, so that...
I would always see myself participating if it's structured in a way to be constructive and positive, if it's going to be just to complain, that's, I'm not interested.
No, I, I, that's not the purpose.
I haven't had that in my life.
Yeah, that's, that's not the purpose.
We want to...
The purpose is to collect information, and then the chairman and co-chair will bring that information to the, to a full board meeting. It's a consolidation of compliments and grievances. I'm sure there's some compliments out there, too. Any further discussion?
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Ms. Storch?
No.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
The, we're still on committees. The other area of concern that I have, which is, I'm sure is going to be well-heard as well, and this is not a grievance towards administration, but I have for four years said that there is no method for an employee of this district to have communication with the employer directly. Now, they can go through administration, but one-on-one with their employer, who is this board, isn't available, and I've heard from many, so it is an issue. I think that there needs to be a employee relations committee established with two representatives from each union as its compiler, or membership of the board, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, and two board members. And understanding that minutes would have to be taken, I'm not sure if we need Jeremy or, hey, we can do it on tape and have it transferred later. Thoughts?
The board's role is to hire the administrator and the, or the superintendent and the treasurer. And by law, 0123, Code of Ethics, Code of Conduct, has several points on how that is to be conducted, working to create the policies, delegating authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and staff, and I believe that is their role, not ours.
Was that board policy number you just read?
0123.
I mean, what's the source? That's the board policy?
It, it's in the bylaws.
Any other conversation on the matter?
I would just highlight with this, if I may, that we do have labor relations meetings whenever either group wants to call those meetings with our union leadership. Additionally, I just want to address that there are grievance procedures within each contractual agreement.
I can't hear you.
There are collective bargaining agreement grievances, that if there is an issue, that they can go through the right procedures regarding how to handle those issues. And so, if that's the case, that they're going to be in grievances there, that's also in violation of the collective bargaining agreement as to what's, what's required of those collective bargaining agreements. So I just want to make sure that that's, that's shared at this time, that if there's a specific situation that violates a contract, that cannot come to the board by collective bargaining agreement that goes to specifically the steps in the grievance procedures that are outlined there.
That would be my other concern, is that there would be legal implications, that we would not have necessarily the full understanding of how to appropriately deal with that to, you know, be in compliance with everything else that's in place. I mean, there's, you know, a lot of, a lot of laws surrounding all of that.
Alice?
I'm reading.
Oh. Angela?
I would like to make a motion to move this discussion, so we can look over that if we need to. Maybe I'm not saying this right, and I'm new with the whole Robert's Rules of Orders. I think this is something that we should discuss, but we need to be able to look at the bylaws with, like I, Sherry noted, with labor relations and things that we could maybe legally be charged with.
Is there a motion on the floor?
No, there wasn't.
No, I remove that.
You don't have to move anything, but you could just, like, make a suggestion.
Suggest.
Yeah.
I've got that. Are you done reading?
Well, I'm, I'm moving through, but I, I kind of agree with Angie in tabling this for us to do more of our research within the bylaws and policies, so that we are in compliance legally, both with the union regulations and otherwise.
And my statement is this, to your point, that, that isn't our job. Every employee of this district is our employee, and we hire every one of them. Now, normally, they come through the administration for approval, but we still have a duty as, as the people in charge, to oversee and communicate with our employees directly.
You say that as if I don't understand that. I have a great awareness of that, Doug, but it's like in the company that I work in...
Yeah.
When I have an issue, I don't call the board of directors, I go to my manager, and if that manager doesn't address the issue, then we go to the, I mean, there, there's a protocol to that. And, and two, understanding that we have an administration in place whose job is to run the district, and micromanaging what they are doing is not our role.
I don't consider it micromanaging to start with. And number two, you said, if you have a problem at your workplace, you go to the manager. If you don't get an answer from the manager, who do you go to?
Their manager.
And if you don't get an answer?
And there are procedures in place that people can do that.
Who do you end up talking to?
I, I understand that, there are procedures in place. I do feel like you may have a conflict of interest.
Why would I have a conflict?
Previously, I don't, because your daughter was an employee?
She still is.
She's the union president.
Yeah.
The union president.
Right.
And I've never voted on anything that deals with her.
No, I understand that, you have. You have always abstained from votes, I understand that, but I feel like, like you have a different take on the conversation because of the relationship as well. So I just want to put that out there, I'm not saying that you are doing anything inappropriate, I'm just saying that you have a different take on...
As, as it was explained to me by the previous president of this board, I do move in different circles, yes. Yes, I do. There is nothing personal about any decision that I make from this seat, never has been, and it's immaterial whether my grown children are employed by the district or not. Do I hear things? Yes. Do they influence what I look at? The primary reason for bringing this topic up came from other people who were employees. And as a matter of fact, three and a half years ago, when Andy Wecker was the president of this board, I explained to him that I had great problems with the structure that's set up. I don't have any problems with the superintendent or the assistant superintendent. My problems is with the structure. You cannot have, it's corrosive. If an employee can't talk to the person who employs them, if there's a problem with management anywhere up, then the end result is you lose good employees because they can't come up and talk to us. If they have an issue with Angie, if it's personal, or whatever, it needs to be talked about, whatever their perception is, but they can't go, they can't get beyond Angie, and they don't want to fight Angie, therefore they go find another job. Believe me, we've lost some very talented, good teachers and other administrative personnel from this district because of the structure. It has nothing to do with Angie.
Doug, I think if this was a serious problem in our district over the past how many years, that we... that we would have at some point been talking about whether there is a continuation of a contract with our treasurer or superintendent. And we have never had that issue. In fact, I don't think we've, like, going through, you know, evaluations and those types of things. That is where that would come into play, not in...
It's never heard, but you can see it in the results. And the results are, over the last short period of time, we went through an enormous amount of principals and other employees.
As has every other district across the state and the nation.
Pardon?
There's been a big turnover within the educational field across every district and every state.
I understand that, but my point...
To blame every bit of those on simply that the position of an administrator is doing something wrong is the way that I'm reading the intent of that conversation. Perhaps I'm reading into that too much. But the board has operated under these expectations since the beginning of this school district. So this would be upending labor relations. This would be upending grievance procedures. This would be in direct violation of collective bargaining agreements to take up any grievances from a union specifically, because there are rules required within those agreements.
And I would actually disagree on the principles, that we've kept principals longer than the typical average in the field, and the ones that have moved up, and it's to move up. Like, we just moved Kate and Annie. Mark's moved up. I've moved up. Different people moved into other roles, but we have not had a huge turnover. We've actually kept people longer than the industry average.
Two to three times longer than the industry average.
We have people right now who could go down the road and make a lot more money, and they've stayed because they love the district, our team, and the vision that we have. But I know there's some concern if some of that's changing, then, yeah, we may leave them. But they've stayed to make less money because they love this district. So that's... I would actually argue the opposite's true.
Well, to the point, and not to continue the conversation with the topic that two board members wanted to move on from. And we'll address it at a different time. So do your research.
I will.
That takes care of item eight, unless there's anything else?
Yeah, well, policy 0169.1 about public participation.
Oh, yes, I forgot. I even had a written note here. What was that policy number?
0169.1, and it's attached to the agenda that was left for us.
There has been some... Conversation has to, and for the public and those viewing, the policy deals with, and the issue currently is participants in the public participation having to state their address. There's been some concerns. Our society has changed. I do believe that the policy itself leaves that authority to me whether to require them to specifically say it or not. I'm good with them not. If anybody understands getting your address out there so that you can receive things in your mail, it would be me. However, I believe the form requires the address. Correct?
It does.
It will still need to be on the form, but publicly not read.
We could change the form to reflect what the board wants, right?
Yeah, I think we have... I mean, the policy says "may", and I believe it's probably up to the presiding officer yourself to, you know, say yes or no, if we need that, so.
The form needs to stay so that we have it of record. But since we do stream now, it just doesn't need to be put out there that way.
The other thing, then, I would also address is making sure that it doesn't show up in the minutes under public participation as well.
I'm not sure it's even legal to request it. Does anybody check?
We were just on a webinar, and there was nothing noted regarding public participation, and it was a local decision.
And it doesn't need to be in the minutes, but do you keep those papers?
I do, yeah. So we will, if I'm hearing you correctly, we will not require a reading. We will request that it stays on the form, but we will just hold that for our own record-keeping.
We can make that change without a policy change based on what this says, right?
I believe so, too.
Because currently, it says "may", which means we can, and it does not say "shall", so.
So are you okay with starting immediately? We don't do that?
I intend to. I was going to bring it up earlier. That moves us... Was that all, Alice? Thanks for catching that. Takes us to item 10, public participation.
No, board members are next. Number nine.
Sorry. I stand corrected. We go to item nine, board members' items of interest. I'll start with you, Alice.
Okay.
A is for Alice.
Yes. Well, first, I would like to address an issue that has been instigated by a rumor. First, I'd like for the people in this room and the community to know that I am a licensed clinical counselor, a chemical dependence counselor. I am also trained, a trained suicide gatekeeper. I have also taken the training in rights law under special education law and served eleven and a half years on the board of the Delaware County Developmental Disability. I'm very concerned that someone in this community would start an unfounded rumor that this board was ending a relationship with a mental health provider, causing parents extreme anxiety and stress for their children who might be receiving these services. As a mental health counselor, I'm very aware of the need for such services, and I would want to choose only the best provider for such services. My question is, what was the purpose of such a rumor when there has been no discussion among this board concerning such decision? To those parents who shared his or her personal story via email, I hear your message, and I share your concern for your child or children. I also take this... I also ask the question why we are seeing such an epidemic of childhood mental health issues. I assure you, this need has been exacerbated by the pandemic, but the need for mental health services was present long before COVID. Parents, please understand that your children's needs are our number one priority. My second issue. Why is it unlawful to require mask-wearing on school buses? Well, Mark, after you and I had that very long discussion, and we both left feeling like it was the right thing, I have done some research and found, and I will give you this so you can further investigate. On page nine of Ed. COVID-19 Handbook, Volume One PDF, it states, "As further described in the section below on transportation considerations, CDC issued an order requiring wearing masks on all public conveyances, including on school buses." Here are the reasons why it's unlawful. As stated in the ORC State Law 5501.1, Section 5501 Ohio Revised Code, Ohio Laws, air quote, "Public transportation does not include school bus transportation." As stated in the United States Code Federal Law Title 49, Section 5302, USC Title 49, Transportation states, "Public transportation does not include school bus." So according to the ORC 2905.12, Section 2905.1 Revised Code, where there is, quote, "legal freedom of choice," a school bus is not public transportation. Therefore, it's legal freedom of choice to not wear a mask. No one can, quote, "take, withhold, or threaten to take or withhold official action." So, that being said, I would like for the wearing of masks not to be mandated on children on the bus nor the driver unless they choose or the parent chooses for them to do so. And I have all of these codes right here, Mark, and I'll get Jeremy to make you copies.
Thank you.
And we can check with our attorney again, because we tried to find some loopholes on that early on, and I'm actually searching my email, because I had him send me some things in writing that I shared with the previous board on that, and I'll forward those to you to look at as well.
I appreciate that. My third item here is, last meeting, I requested that the COVID shot not be administered on Big Walnut School property. And I was sent information from the director of the Delaware Public Health District who explained that their people actually come to the board office. They bring all their supplies, all their equipment. It was suggested that the school be listed on their insurance. My point is this. Why are they passing the Delaware Health Department Office, three doors down from Kroger's, to come all the way over here to do this? Again, I see it as the school being used to promote, whether the school thinks that's the case or not. That's how it's viewed by the public, that it's being promoted by the school. So I stand by my request that we not be the facility for administering the COVID shot to children. I don't know if that takes a motion or what, but that's how I feel. That's it. Unless you want me to go on. I have a couple of pages.
Sherri?
I'm going to speak for Mr. Fuji real quick. School Counselor Week, gratitude for all that our school counselors do for the students. I can think to times when my daughter engaged with school counselors in an intermediate school, my son engaged with counselors. Both of my kids loved the counselors that they worked with, and I know that the guidance his children have received and continue to receive from the guidance department is appreciated, and many of, you know, their friends and classmates as well. The role of the school counselor has changed significantly since inception in the 1970s from administrative functions to curriculum and assessment to student relationships and our personal skills and development. Mr. Fuji, as one board member, certainly wants to articulate his appreciation for each of those folks in our district. In addition, he wanted to extend his gratitude to Mr. Buskirk and his team in his office for the results of the audit. Always have focused on financial transparency, stewardship of operations, and processes that keep the district in good operational standing. So, well done, bravo, and kudos to everyone of those people from Mr. Fuji. And I agree, both of those areas of our district are pretty remarkable. We are very lucky here. I do have just a couple of other things. I'll try to be really quick. Last week, I attended a Zoom call on research on how the COVID-19 pandemic affected student learning. It was put on by the Crane Research Center for Early Childhood Research and Policy at OSU. A couple of the administrators or staff members here maybe attended the same thing. It was really interesting, though, the research they compiled. The ELA impact shows a third to a half a year of typical growth loss. The math impact was a half a year to a year of typical growth. That math impact was like, whoa, that's huge. So an 8% decrease in the share of students achieving grade level proficiency in ELA, 15% decrease in math. Some of the things they found, there was a larger disruption for older students just because of the amount of contact they get. In ELA, disadvantaged groups saw larger declines, which I don't think is that surprising. But in math, there were large declines across the board. For both ELA and math, there were larger declines among students with less access to in-person learning. They did... Part of why they did the study was it was requested by the state, so one of the things that they looked at was the, kind of like, economic impact of it. Says, "Left unaddressed, this corresponds to approximately 3% loss of lifetime income to these students, if that is not, if those losses aren't made up, and a 6% decrease to future Ohio GDP." So some of the little takeaways that I had, first, like, I don't think that this is abnormal. We had a huge worldwide disruption. So I don't think that, you know, somebody out there wasn't doing their job or anything like that. I think this could be expected. But I think it's very important to have this data so that these deficiencies can be addressed. I know that in our district, this kind of stuff is looked at all the time. I know just at our last meeting, Annie and Kate presented us with some data and their concerns about the interventions and things. So I'm so grateful that we have teams that look into this and can address these issues with our students. I am very grateful for our district's decision to prioritize in-person learning because that had a huge impact, especially on math learning. And I know there's a lot of criticism out there about state testing, and it's not ideal, but having the data is extremely valuable in identifying these issues and reaching students that are impacted the most. So some positives to come out of that. Secondly, I was listening to a TEDx podcast earlier this week, which focused on how the pandemic and worker shortages have pulled forward automation and AI in many aspects of the labor market. It's a huge investment for companies to make, but if they can't find workers anyway, there's no reason to wait, so a lot of them are doing that now. So what these experts were discussing is that instead of competing with machines, we should focus on skills that are things machines can't be programmed to do, and education should prepare students for the next era of the workforce, focus on experiences and emotions, not transactions. The biggest jobs in tech now and in the future will revolve around trust and safety. So obviously, this concept is not new to Big Walnut. This is the whole idea behind the development of the 2020 vision all those years ago. That has now become our Big Walnut vision. I just thought that this was an important idea to reiterate, given that we've heard some feedback the last six months or so of wanting schools to only teach math and science or just basics. Teaching our students only what we can program computers to do is to do a disservice to them. So that's where this whole child and teaching our kids to think and to be collaborative and, you know, all of that stuff is incredibly important. So I'm glad we focus on that. And then just one quick comment that comes out of Mark's staffing update on the instructional facilitators. Not trying to say that any of us don't think that this is important, but just as I was hearing you talk about that, imagine any of us, our first couple of years on our job, whatever that job was, not having somebody to go to with questions, not having, like, on-the-job training all the time and all of that. I mean, these instructional facilitators really make a huge difference in our school and for these educators as they're getting up to speed and, you know, as other educators are having to learn new skills and things. And it's always great to have, you know, other people to bounce ideas off of, so. So thanks for including that in the staffing plan. I think it's really important.
That's it. Angela?
Well, Sherri, you brought up some good points. Counselors, I want to thank you. You... I've had, fortunately, my children haven't had to experience that a lot, but we had one little blip on the radar, and the immediate response was like lightning speed. And I thank you. You know who you are, and you are all doing an excellent job. And I hear that, and it has been echoed in the emails that we have received over this past week. With that, I'll start with and what you just said, Sherri, about the instructional facilitators. That is a role that people might not be very familiar with it, but I experienced that as I am now in a teaching role. And to have had one of those facilitators roaming around or taking care of those quick little situations would have been phenomenal. So I encourage... I am very happy to hear more information about the facilitators, as it was a personal benefit, would have benefited me. My interest, my items of interest. First of all, I would like to address the rumor mills, as Alice did, about the Facebook blogger in regards to removing the counseling from our schools. You owe this community an apology. This created waves of parents unnecessarily stressed out, worried, and in downright tears of anguish. This board has not spoken... This board has not spoken, nor has it been on our agenda, to address this at all. To the parents, grandparents, former board members, I have read every one of your emails, and I sympathize with you. And I have empathy for what personal stories you've told. They are truly heard, and my heart goes out. My heart is racing just thinking about all the stories that our community shared with the board members here. We have your back. We want to hear these stories. We want to hear your personal benefits. I would like to thank Mr. Fuji for replying to your emails. I encourage this community in the future, be your own fact checker. That's what I have to say about that. Dress code. In 5511, dress code and grooming. This comes down to the superintendent shall establish grooming guidelines to promote discipline, maintain order, secure the safety of students, and provide a healthy environment conducive to academic purposes. Such guidelines shall prohibit the student dress or grooming in practices. It goes on and on. It talks about creating disorder, disruption of the educational program. Further down, it talks about propriety and modesty and a good sense in attire and appearance. I would like to address, or maybe we can work on this, or the board, or with Mrs. Hamburg, the dress code. In my belief, my personal opinion, during school hours, unless it is a school sanctioned dress-up day or assigned by a teacher, for example, school plays or costumes, no costumes of any kind, for example, animal horns, ears, tails, animal collars, animal chains, or face paintings that can be distracting or construed to look like an animal or character. I will leave those thoughts up to the rest of you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Angela. I'll just go on a very short item that Alice brought up, which was the school masks on bus. When you had that conversation with the attorney, I believe it was 5501.01 for the Ohio Revised Code number, she made me aware of it. But my stance on it, even though it's never come up in these meetings, as a CDL holder, I haven't believed that the federal government has had the authority to dictate the students wear masks on buses. So, we do need to check that out.
I can ask him again. I just sent you an email, and it specifically references that ORC. Because I had received an email from a district up north that was ignoring it. This is back in August. And why they cited that particular ORC. And I sent it to our attorney, and I sent you his response. Actually, I did not send it to our attorney. I sent it to my colleagues, one of which sent it to our attorney, and he sent me back an answer for free, which was nice. It was like, great. But I sent it to you, but I can check with him if he thinks anything has changed or if their firm's opinion on that has changed.
Well, I believed it wasn't worth the time to argue last year, because I wanted to see some tangible. I couldn't find the ORC that she provided. Once I read it, it clearly states, and I would be, I'm good to take the legal fight if we have to have a legal fight.
So, in his email, it said, just FYI, it says, just thought I would share, in our opinion, the Ohio definitions are irrelevant. The CDC order attached does not even mention public transportation. Requires mask for people traveling on conveyances. The order in federal law defines a conveyance as an aircraft, train, road vehicle, bus, or other means of transport. It goes on and on, says, the CDC order is based on federal law, not state law, and can't be overridden by a state law definition, especially one that defines a term that is not used in the order. I guess there was a Colmas Dispatch article that kind of got brought up. So, again, I'm just sharing our attorney's opinion. I'm not an attorney.
Yeah, I hear you. And that's why I said, Mark, I've got all the federal law right here.
And I-
It clearly states that school buses are exempt from that requirement.
And I understand the legal argument that he presented, which was they utilize the term conveyances instead of, I guess my point is that I would be more comfortable now than I was six months ago arguing the point.
Is there a risk of, like, ESSR dollars in not following?
It loosely talks about that you're supposed to be doing all you can to keep your students from getting sick. So, I think, I think I don't know.
I think there's-
That's a wise answer.
Well, no. And I say that because I think there's lots of times where there's rules or mandates that are handed down federally or by the state that we don't necessarily love. But in order to get the funding, we are required to follow them. And, you know, I don't want to put funding at risk.
Would you like us to confer with Dane again? Or do you want to have him come in and talk to them? Or what would you like us to do?
No, I would like you to confirm it with the data that I'm providing you and fight the battle. Mark?
It's a very direct person you'd like to work with. No, I think the other piece, and just a quick research on the CDC's website, they specifically call out school transportation, school buses, as being required within that order. And so, certainly, I'll research that more and get to learn a little bit more about what you have there. But it does specifically call out, it doesn't just classify it as public transportation. The order is public conveyances, but then there's an FAQ with that CDC guideline that specifically states it is required for students two years old and older, technically, on that CDC website as to what it counts there as the requirement.
And to segue on that, I heard this morning, there are three states who are totally eliminating masks altogether. And the CDC is starting to panic that they're losing control. So, I say, let's be trailblazers and take the mask off the kids on the bus. Because we have the authority to do it. And the driver.
I'll certainly review what you have there. Thank you.
Thanks.
And that'll take us to, I think that's all. Let me check my notes here. Now, to take us to item 10, public participation. Did we have any?
We do. We have two. And just as a note, as part of our public participation, that this is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not considered a public community meeting. This is a time for public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the agenda. And you can see the criteria as part of the public participation, which was attached. And I think I just got a third one. And as a reminder, I think three minutes. And if you would like, Mr. Crowe, I can keep track of that. Our first speaker is Diana Butts, regarding selection for mental health vendors.
And as you know, you don't have to give your address.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, thank you for your time and attention this morning. I sincerely appreciate it. I value our community, and I am committed to the district's mission to inspire and guide our students to their maximum potential. Today, I am commenting upon the district's vision to create a safe, respectful, and welcoming environment. And I do this in the context of mental health services for our students. Centero is the vendor presently providing mental health services to our students. It is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) entity that is state certified and nationally accredited. It currently provides counseling services with an estimated annual value of almost a quarter million dollars to our students at no cost to our district. It is my understanding that these services are provided with the permission of parents and that Centero encourages parents to stay engaged in the children's counseling. Should the board deem it necessary and appropriate to seek an alternative vendor, I advise, urge, and ask that it do so with deliberate care. At the very least, this board must use a thorough vetting procedure that documents an evaluation criteria and due diligence in addressing both community expectations and industry standards. This is important, not only for our students, but for the, because the failure to do so could also have a dire ramification for the district. Last year, the American Academy of Pediatrics declared a national emergency of child and adolescent mental health, also referred to by Ms. Nix. Students nationwide are facing growing mental health challenges over the past decade, which has been exasperated by COVID-19. These challenges face our Big Walnut students, too. According to the National Association of School Psychologists, responsive school mental health services are essential to creating a culture in which students feel safe and empowered to report safety concerns, which is proven to be an effective tool in safety strategies within the schools. Historically, it has been challenging to hold a school district legally responsible for a school shooting. However, since the shootings at Parkland High School in 2018 and the Oxford High School just last year, that was in Michigan, this has begun to change. The threat of violence in our schools is now commonly recognized as a grave concern. The prevalence of school violence and the fact that most school shootings have involved some type of warning in the advance of the violent act have shifted the legal review to allow for legal conclusions that a school district may have acted with gross negligence or with wanton and woeful disregard for the safety of the students. With that in mind, failure to follow the appropriate due diligence and vetting procedures in selecting a mental health service provider could put Big Walnut at significant financial risk. So, again, thank you for your concern for our students and your prudent consideration to this matter.
Next is Leana Lee about vaccine clinics.
Good morning. During the January 20th board meeting, I was shocked and saddened to hear a board member's recommendation that the Big Walnut School District no longer allow its facilities to be used for vaccination clinics. This valuable public service and completely voluntary opportunity that is offered by the Delaware Public Health District through our schools provides many of our families the ability to receive these critical health services at no cost and with limited disruption to their daily lives. With a significant number of our students being eligible for free and reduced-priced lunches, I have to believe that many of our families may not have easy access to primary medical care. In response to concerns raised at that meeting, I reached out to Sheila Hiddleston, the County Health Commissioner, for additional information. She indicated that the Health District is very appreciative of the district's longstanding partnership and opportunity to provide vaccinations to community members in an easy-to-access location. In addition to a convenient location, the DPHD shared that school clinics offer the ability to vaccinate a large number of people in a short time as compared to using their office location. Of particular note, she said that DPHD provides all supplies, and there is no reimbursement to Big Walnut for use of the space. With specific regard to marketing the COVID-19 vaccination clinics, Commissioner Hiddleston said all information shared with families was provided by the Health District. Potential school liability was also a concern raised at the meeting. Hiddleston confirmed that the DPHD has comprehensive liability insurance. Parents were encouraged to review the information from the Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting System. When evaluating data from VAERS, it is important to note that for any reported event, no cause-and-effect relationship has been established. Reports of all possible associations between vaccines and adverse events are filed in VAERS. Therefore, VAERS collects data on any adverse event following vaccination, be it coincidental or truly caused by a vaccine. The report of an adverse event to VAERS is not documentation that a vaccine caused the event. Additionally, for a board member to insinuate that the decision to provide our facilities for vaccine clinics was financially motivated was completely irresponsible. A simple phone call or email to Treasurer Buskirk would have answered that question prior to the meeting. Please do your homework before making unfounded allegations in this public forum that disparage our district and our capable administrative staff. Our family, like hundreds of others, have benefited from accessing these clinics. I implore this board to continue to provide the opportunity for this valuable and necessary service to our community, no matter what vaccine it is. Thanks.
Next is Gretchen Hofer regarding Senate Bill 22, Moment of Silence and Volunteers.
Thank you. Good morning. I wanted to, first of all, I got here a little bit late. Wanted to find out for the moment of silence, did that go through? Is that happening? Okay, so I wanted to thank you for that. As we implement that, if it's going to be after the Pledge of Allegiance, I do feel it would be beneficial for the Section 3313.601, which is the Ohio Revised Code Moment of Silence for Expression, the exercise of religious beliefs, meditation, or whatever it may be, time to give thanks, whatever that may be for the student. I would like to see if this was discussed, that as this is launched into our district as a moment of silence, that the revised code could be read to the students, mainly probably middle school and high school. But I do really feel like it should be read to the student body from the principal to open it up for these children to understand what that means. So, whatever that means for them. That would be the first thing, if we could read this to help these children understand what this moment is for. Under the Ohio Revised Code, I would appreciate that. Regarding the masking of our bus drivers, I had the opportunity to be in that accident where my son and I, our car was totaled. It was his bus driver that, after speaking with Ron McClure recently, had a transportation. I gave it some time before going in to see what the district was going to do about it, to really understand what the purpose of the accident was. And basically, it's really unexplained on how that accident happened at 8:30 in the morning on a very sunny day, which could have been a very fatal accident. And after speaking with him, I really question why we, as a district, continue to speak about mental health, equality, but we don't treat our bus drivers the way we're treating the rest of our staff. I feel very, you know, sad when I seat pass bus drivers that are, you know, if it's against their conscience, that they do have the mask on. So, I would ask that we, as a community, as a board, continue to work to respect the dignity of all people and treat our administration, whether they're bus drivers, janitors, whatever the position is in our district, they all have equal value. We can't do this job without them. And I want my children, and I want our district, to make sure that our children understand that. Regarding janitors, I would love to see the announcements after lunch. Children, we're going to take a moment. You look around, clean up the floor. We've got to start to pre-teach these principals along with the staff. So, thank you so much. Again, I think under Senate Bill, there are three schools currently in our state that are not requiring the masking of our bus drivers. And Ron McClure does have that list of schools. So, I will let you guys get with them on that. Thank you.
And final is Crystal Maza about Centero.
As a journalist who believes in fact-checking, let me state, Ms. Graziosi, you posted several times during your campaign that schools do not need counselors. You said that parents should do a better job at home. I'm sure I'm speaking for many parents right now when I say that we are relieved to hear that you feel differently now. I find it ironic that the journalist, me, who shared provable facts with the public, is the person you are pinpointing as the problem. You may not be aware of the multitude of anti-Centero presentations to the board recently, one of which included a giant poster board and others that included the passing out of DVDs. I remember them because I was in attendance at each one of those meetings. The most recent request to the board in which you both were present was January 13th, when a community member stood at this podium and asked you, the board, to stop Centero and find an alternative organization. It is reassuring to hear today- It is reassuring to hear today that Centero is here to stay in this district. As a stakeholder in Big Walnut and as a mother who's committed to endless support of my children's education and their classmates, thank you for letting us all know right here and now that you will see to it that Centero will continue its invaluable counseling service for students.
That's it?
That's it. I will remind participants in the future that if you're giving public particip, during the public participation, you do not address any individual board member. You address the board. I'll handle another thing. Threw it away too fast. That brings us to item 11, scheduling of the next board meeting. Next board meeting will be on February 17th at 6:30 here in the administrative office. It will be streamed. One other item I have, does anybody have anything they want on the agenda for that meeting? You won't be here.
I'll be here. I don't know right now, but I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't-
Nothing?
No.
Item 12.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Will we continue with the policy study since there will be two members that won't be here? The policies-
Review?
Or-
The policy review? Get me the list. I'll see how long it is, and then we'll go from that. I would really prefer that all five members be present for those discussions. Item 12, it has recommended the board enter executive session to confer with an attorney for the Board of Education concerning disputes involving the board that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Jeremy?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes. We're going to adjourn, and I don't believe we'll be coming back out, and we will be coming back out, but with no formal actions.